Do roll call.
My pleasure, Councilmember Hallibur.
Present.
Councilmember Fung.
Here.
Councilmember Pappen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Here.
Mayor Snyder.
Here.
All councilmembers present.
Thank you, and it is my pleasure tonight to introduce the Cub Scout troop of Millbrae, PAC 355, and they are going to do our Pledge of Allegiance tonight. So please welcome Cub Master Mark Rockelman and Weebalos One Lucas Rockelman and Aidan Chen and Wayne Chow, who's a Weebalos Two, and Kalen Chow, who is a Bear. So if you would all please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Weebalos, I am so happy to have you with us tonight. You may begin.
I pledge allegiance.
To the, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To the people of Millbrae, Weebalos are some of our own children. I, both Tom Williams and I have had the pleasure of speaking to the Weebalos, and I am amazed at their knowledge of environment and nature, and I am just so happy to have you join us tonight as part of our getting kids involved in government process here. So Weebalos, you are terrific. Thank you. Be safe.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, ceremonial presentations, City Clerk, if you could pull up the first one, please. And I believe we've got our Environmental Program Manager Andrea Papajon, who will be accepting. So if Andrea could get ready. So this is my favorite time of year, of course, because it's April, it's Earth Month, and I am very happy to read, whereas the first Earth Day was proclaimed in 1970 in order to educate people on responsible environmental stewardship, protect the environment, and conserve resources. And it is now the 51st anniversary of Earth Day, which the city has supported since its inception back on April 22nd, 1970, when it was created by US Senator Gaylord Nelson. And whereas the global theme for Earth Day 2021 is Restore Our Earth, which focuses on natural processes, emerging green technologies, innovative thinking that can restore the world's ecosystems, and whereas the annual celebration is a reminder of the constant need for environmental activism, stewardship commitments, and sustainable sustainability efforts for current and future generations. And whereas everyone must step forward and take action to create a positive environmental change to combat the global challenges, and whereas the city celebrates and supports Earth Day by implementing a variety of activities to engage our community's awareness and participation to restore our planet. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2021, as Earth Day. And we invite all of you or encourage our businesses to use this day to celebrate the earth and commit to creating a cleaner and healthy environment for a better quality of life for current and future generations by planting trees, gardening, picking up litter, recycling, and conserving energy and water. And with that, I hand this off to Mrs. Papa, Ms. Papajon.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder, Vice Mayor Oliva, and councilmembers. Thank you for this Earth Day proclamation. Earth Day is a reminder of the constant need for environmental activism and stewardship. Normally, we'd have a number of public activities and events to further educate and take action toward protecting the environment. This year will be different, as people can do things at home. But the core goal of protecting the environment and conserving resources remains the same. We greatly appreciate that our residents and businesses really continually step up to do their part. And it's really my honor to receive the city of Millbrae's proclamation, April 22nd, 2021, as Earth Day. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't counsel any comments from counsel? I don't see any hands raised. Typically, the city of Millbrae does an event on the Saturday closest to Earth Day. We plant trees, we clean up garbage. It's really a terrific community day. The youth groups get involved. There's a little challenge for the best garbage or the biggest garbage, and sadly with COVID, we can't do it. However, I know that staff is working diligently to work on a bunch of programs that we hope will have a delayed Earth Day. We'll have it in October, weather permitting, with tree planting and other events. And with luck with COVID, we will go back to our Pollution Prevention Week in September, which usually has a big cleanup on there. But I know that a lot of our residents did programs last year where they went and found a spot in town and cleaned it up, and we are grateful for that. Make sure you wear gloves and you wash up afterwards. But the city is planning on having a real Earth Day. We're just going to have it in October this year. Councilwoman Pappen.
I'd just like to read the next proclamation.
Oh, very good. Thank you. With that, Ms. Papajon, welcome to Millbrae. I don't know if we formally have welcomed you since joining our staff. It's great to have you, and I look forward to working with you. I know the other activity that we're not quite ready to announce, but I'm going to announce it anyway, is that I will, with any other council members who would like to, will be hosting a town hall meeting of some form, a virtual meeting to talk about, to talk about different actions that we can start planning on while we're still sheltering at home with COVID. And then as we open up, the activities that can start being implemented as people get vaccinated. So please look for an announcement from the city for that meeting. It'll include things like working with the Boy Scouts to do a tree inventory, to a memorial tree grove that's coming to council in two weeks, and other activities that staff have been, staff and a couple of our commissions have been working on. So with that, everybody have a terrific Earth Month. Do what you can, and we'll be together in October. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next up, Councilwoman Pappen will be doing the proclamation on Armenian Remembrance Day.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you. I see many of our Armenian residents and brethren here for joining us this evening. Armenian Remembrance Day is a national holiday in Armenia and is observed by Armenians in dispersed communities around the world. And April 24th honors the Armenian notable, the, excuse me, April 24th honors the Armenian notables deported from the Ottoman Empire, the capital, in 1915, most whom would be executed. And Armenian Remembrance Day is held annually to commemorate the victims of the Armenian genocide from 1915 to 1923, where 1.5 million Armenians were massacred or marched to their deaths. And as we remember the victims and survivors of the Armenian genocide, we also honor the strength and the resilience of the Armenian people. Forced to build new lives, Armenians bravely forged ahead in the face of unimaginable tragedy. And on this solemn day of remembrance, we recall the darkness of the past and look ahead to a brighter future for the people of Armenia and reaffirm our commitment to preventing future atrocities from being committed against any people. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do proclaim April 24th, 2021, as Armenian Remembrance Day. And I really want to point out these, how significant this type of remembrance is to everyone throughout the world, because these atrocities continue to happen, and they should never, ever be repeated. So we stand strong with our Armenian community and this remembrance, and keep it straight in front of everyone here that this cannot happen again, and we must fight against this, because it happened last year. And we still need to fight against this type of atrocities. So I'm not sure which member of our Armenian community is going to accept. They want to raise their hand. I see Grace there. I think Mateo is going to join us as well. Okay, Grace Andonian, please accept on our behalf. Yeah, you have to unmute, though.
Yes. So, good evening. My name is Grace Andonian, and I'm a resident of Millbrae and principal of the only Armenian school in Northern California, KZV Armenian School, located in San Francisco. Thank you to the Millbrae City Council for joining Armenian-American across the Bay Area, California, and the United States in commemorating the 106th anniversary of the Armenian genocide. The Turkish authorities planned and executed unspeakable atrocities across, against the Armenian people from 1915 through 1923, resulting in the murder of one and a half million Armenians, and the forced exile of more than 500,000 innocent people, and the expropriation of their lands and all community properties, institutions, and personal belongings. My own grandfathers were also one of those that were exiled, and they were forced to march through the desert into Lebanon. The American people contributed substantially to the survival of those who escaped the Armenian genocide through the humanitarian efforts of the Near East Relief Foundation, established by US Ambassador Henry Morgenthau, which raised approximately $2 billion in today's currency to save approximately 1 million Armenian, Greek, and Assyrian refugees, including 132,000 orphans of the genocide. And while the Republic of Turkey denies the occurrence of these well-documented and widely recognized crimes against humanity, the United States House of Representatives and the US Senate passed resolutions in 2019 recognizing these events as genocide. The White House has yet to do so. It is our hope that President Biden will follow suit and formally recognize the Armenian genocide this year. Thank you again to the mayor and to the city council for tonight's remembrance and your continued support.
I'd like to add one last thing, Madam Mayor. Racism still exists here. The Andonian's school was, vandalism occurred there. I think it was just last year. So we cannot have this anywhere. And Millbrae's anti-racist program, I hope acknowledges too, that it happens still and cannot be allowed to exist in our community. So I thank all of my friends, and I thank the city council for doing this once again. And our Congresswoman, I'm sure, Congresswoman Jackie Speer, who happens to be part Armenian as well. Hopefully, we will get this at a national level. I know my dad did it at the state legislature, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pappen, if you want us to write a formal letter to the governor, we could, or to the president, we can do so.
I think that would be good, and I think we can copy our Congresswoman as well. She usually presents a resolution too, so thank you. I appreciate that.
Very good. And thank you, Grace, and to all of our Armenian residents. Thank you for keeping this in our attention. We should never forget our history, or we are doomed to repeat it. So thank you, and I'm sorry for your loss. Okay, um, next, thank you. Thank you for joining us. And if we can have Public Works Director Key Lim ready to go. April is, is also Arbor Day, although in California Arbor Day is actually in March. And we had talked about having tree plantings in March and April and as many times, but we're still not quite there yet. So with this proclamation, we're celebrating trees. In 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas Arbor Day is now recognized throughout the nation and the world, reminding us that one person's initiative can make a lasting and meaningful difference. And whereas this is the 28th year that the city of Millbrae has been designated Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and renew the city's desire to continue enhancing our community. The city has planted over 3,000 trees, which has helped reduce soil erosion by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperatures, clean our air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And I'm going to add one more that isn't in the resolution. New studies are finding that trees can actually absorb noise, noise from cars, noise from airplanes. Not perfect, but can do their part. Trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and increase our property values, enhancing the economic vitality of our business areas and beautifying our community. And whereas the city is committed to urban forestry and supporting programs for tree planting, and whereas the city celebrates and supports Arbor Day by planting trees this year at Josephine Wasser Optimus Park, now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day. And we encourage our community and our businesses to use this day to celebrate the earth and to commit to creating a cleaner and healthier environment for a better quality of life for current and future generations by planting trees. I'm going to leave off the rest because that's Earth Day, but let's come together and plant trees. And with that, Public Works Director Lim, would you join us, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of Millbrae City Council, Key Lim, Public Works Director. On behalf of Public Works staff, I just want to take this opportunity to express our gratitude and our appreciation. And I want to say a big thank you to the council for your continued support in our effort to make Millbrae our beautiful city, a Tree City USA. Like the mayor had mentioned, we have continued to get certified as Tree City USA, and will continue with that effort. And again, on behalf of Public Works staff, I want to say thank you, big thank you to all of you.
Excellent. And for the public, if you've been driving around town and you happen to see a tree over by Cappuccino here in Millbrae Highlands, I believe I've seen some over in, on Hillcrest along the spur. If you see that green bag, those are trees that have recently, over the last couple of years, been planted by our Public Works Department and is part of restoring our urban forest. So you'll be hearing more of that in the future. So thank you, Mr. Lim. And thanks staff for all the work they're doing for our trees. Okay, moving along, City Manager, I believe we've got agenda overview and staff briefing.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you. Members of the city council, Tom Williams, City Manager. In terms of an overview, we have some new and exciting things that are happening. For example, the library will be opening next week, starting Monday, which is April 19th. They will have expanded hours and begin in library service and express service, and continuing to offer the popular curbside service. The express in library service will be available 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM three days a week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And it will include and allow in library browsing. We have Wi-Fi access at the library, use of computer and printers. So please visit smcl.org for more information. Again, that is smcl.org for library information and hours. As you all know, a pretty exciting time for the recreation center. There was a massive mat foundation pour that happened last week. This is a great milestone for the new recreation center, as now block construction, the builder of the project, will begin shortly vertical construction and steel framing. And so our citizens and everyone will be able to actually see the new recreation center come out of the ground and, and be able to visibly kind of see this historic building come, come out of the ground. We also have a camera that's available 24/7 on our website. You can visit that at millbrea recreationcenter.com. Again, millbrea recreationcenter.com. We're also starting our adult soccer league that was so popular. So our recreation department has opened up registration, and the season will begin April 26th, and will go through June 14th. Games will take place on Monday evenings from 6:00 PM to 7:00 at Spring Valley Elementary School. Interested participants can sign up at www.bit.ly/milrec. So again, www.bit.ly/milrec. Also, we are, we are continuing to look for suitable locations to construct another dog park. As you know, there's a dog park that's, that's under construction over at the TOD2 project, but we're looking for a second dog park. One of the areas that we are looking at is the Monterey Linear Park over off of, at the corner of Center Street and Monterey. We have a second public meeting to discuss that and get feedback from the community to see if this is a viable location. That meeting will take place this Thursday, April 15th, at 6:00 PM. Information is available on our city's website, on our news page, and that will provide Zoom access and information to the meeting. So again, a community meeting on the feasibility of a new dog park at Monterey and Center Street this Thursday, April 15th, at 6:00 PM. And then lastly, and I know Councilmember Fung will probably have more information on this, but I did want to announce, we've been working with MCC and PCBA, who are hosting a Millbrae Community Asians United in Action rally in March, this Saturday, April 17th, at 12:00 PM out in front of City Hall. And during the rally, there'll be organizers who will discuss how we can improve overall safety and awareness and protection of our Asian and Pacific Islander community, along with the community at large. So with the increasing violence against the Asian community, Asian businesses, the Millbrae community will be hosting this rally in March, again, this Saturday, April 17th, at 12:00 PM in front of City Hall. So Mayor, that concludes my brief update and can move to the agenda unless.
City Manager, I'm sorry, because we lose people by the end of the meeting. I forgot to prime you on the virtual art show. Deadlines are due May 3rd. I don't know if you've got that pulled up.
I did not, so I will, I'll work with our recreation director and make sure that we get that word out.
Okay, very good. For the public, the city is having its second virtual art show. Submittals are due by May 3rd. And if you go to the city's website, you will see the artwork has already been posted on the website. And from the little ones, from the elementary school to the adults, the artwork is really fantastic. So I encourage you to submit your artwork for the city's second virtual art show. And next year, with luck, we'll be back in person.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, moving to the agenda overview. We have our normal calendar of events. We have our reports of bills and claims. And we have three meeting minutes for approval. One is the meeting of November 10th, 2020. The second is November 24th, 2020. And the third meeting minutes are from the meeting of January 12th, 2021. There are no oral reports this evening from committees or commission chairs. After that is public communication. Public communication is for any member of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda, and each member of the community that would like to address the council has a limit of three minutes. We have three items on the consent calendar, starting with item number five, and that's consider approval by motion accordingly investment schedule for the second quarter of fiscal year 2020, 2021. Item number six is to consider the appointments to city committees. Item number seven is to consider approval of street closures on the 300 block of Broadway for our Beats and Brews events, starting on July 4th, August 19th, September 16th, and October 21st. Would like to note that there was a typo in the staff report. It said the second Thursdays of each month, but it's actually the third Thursday of each month. So these dates are correct, and they are the third Thursdays. And I'd also like to note that this is for planning purposes, and the event will actually depend on how the coronavirus and pandemic rules from the county and from the state of California continue to play out for gathering protocols. There are no public hearings this evening. Then we move on to existing business. We have three items under existing business. Item number eight is an informational and status report on the city's traffic calming program. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the city manager execute a professional services agreement to move forward with our long-awaited general plan process. Item number 10 is to authorize application for receipt of a grant from the Millbrae Community Foundation. Moving on to new business, we have two items under new business. Item number 11 is an informational report on the 2020 Urban Management Plan. And item number 12 is a review and affirmation of the citywide position opposing Senate Bill 82, petty theft that was introduced by State Senator Skinner. Then we move on to council comments. And then Mayor and council, we have a closed session immediately following this meeting. And as I mentioned, we'll have to log off of this and log back on.
Thank you, City Manager. Okay, if there are no comments from council, I would love to approve the minutes. If there is any changes to the minutes, if not, approval, motion, and second four minutes.
Pappen, move approval. The ball raised.
Oliva's second. Thank you. City Clerk, could you call the roll, call the vote?
Councilmember Hallibur.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The reading, the regular meeting minutes of November 10th, 2020, November 24th, 2020, and January 12th, 2021 is approved by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you, City Clerk. If the public will notice, the minutes are becoming more abbreviated, but staff is doing a great job of timestamping where in the video recording you can find it, and that is posted on the website. So if you really want to get into the details, you can find it that way. But the minutes are now much simpler. All right. There are no oral reports from city commissions or committees. With that, it is opening for public comment. Public, this is the time to comment on items that are not on tonight's city council agenda. If you want to speak on an agenda item, you'll have that opportunity as that item is called. So if we have any public comment from the public. All right, Marian Kong.
Hi, I'm right here, I'm right here. Anyway, I just want to make a couple of my, my thoughts. First is, it's very, it's very happy to me that our city is standing firm on opposing SB 82. And in my mind, resident safety comes number one.
Mayor, if I may, this item is actually on the agenda. So I think Marian can, if she can wait until item 12.
Oh, but I only have this time. I had to leave later. Anyway, I'm so glad you guys are working on that. That's fine. And then the other one is, I heard about, there's a progress on the, I don't know what that call is called, proposal or request, such as something called district election for City of Millbrae. And being as just a small resident in the city, not knowing any legal aspect, anything, not knowing how you can really work in the government office, but then I just want to say is, I base my understanding, I think our city is very small, very, very small. And I know people from all the way to the south boundary of Millbrae, north boundary of Millbrae, west and east. And, and then I really don't think we should invest the, the financial, the financial aspect of the expense to, to make, to even study the approach, given, given that, the, my understanding is city budget is not very well healthy at this moment due to the pandemic. So I really don't see there's a need, but then you guys know more, and then I trust you all to do whatever we need to do. But anyway, that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kong. Alice Kwong.
Hi. Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all councilperson. Thank you all the time and what's so hot too, for the communities. And the same, even though the agenda is number 12, but when I read today's city council agenda, I feel so happy and thanks all the considering right to opposite the SB 82. And all those months, I And all those months, I think we have a difficulty time due to the safety issues. And as we worry about inside the house, outside the house. Or sing or individually on the street or in the anywhere. Seems like we don't have any confidence about safety. And I thought that's the social needs, our base human beings, need to be living in a peaceful, safety community environment. And I thank you all the considering of the letter. And the second is the same. Millbury is very small, unique cities. Small as only the population, just about twenty two thousand. And also look like international different background people living here. And so far, I feel very comfortably to have this Millbury as my home, my hometown. And my children grow up here. And we all will be a voter, and we want to support the city and consider anything will benefit for the community. But if the city for the future voting become the district, that will be diverse, you know, diversified us for different location. And we cannot choosing anyone we want to vote, that's a big problems. And I really urging our council member to consider our worry and concerns. And of course, like when we have anything happen to the city, we all have a friend and talk discussing each other about what's the best benefit. So my voice is not only present myself, it's present all my friends. I I I say that way. And to urging our council member to consider our concerns. And then us is as thank you for on the seventeenth, the rally. And is protect our community be a peaceful place. I really love Millbury, we have been living here for a long time, it's my home. So I continue to wish our place be safe. And be all smiling to each other, we don't need to afraid on the street and to not able to hear the phone. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kwan. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay, with that. Elaine, do you have anybody on the phone?
I do not.
Okay, with that, closing public communication, moving on to consent calendar. I am pulling agenda item six off of consent. But if there can be a motion to approve five and seven. Nathan, I see a hand raised. I'm sorry. Nathan. Elaine, I have a feeling that Nathan Chan was going to speak on an item not on the agenda. Can we let him go?
No, I I don't have my hand raised.
Oh, okay, my computer showed your hand raised, my apologies. All right, going back to.
Mayor, there is a number that raised their hand is ending with nine ninety six.
Okay. Let's reopen public comment, and if the person on the phone could please identify themselves, that would be terrific, thank you.
Caller, you are unmuted, so if you want to start speaking. Please press star six. Caller nine nine eight six.
Give it a few more seconds here.
I'm also unmuted.
Okay, star six, star six, can you, can you folks hear me?
We can. And could you please identify yourself?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, my name is Johnny Tam. And I've been a part of Millbrae Community before about four years now. And very interested in the well being in a community, that's why I'm making this comment. First of all, congratulations on last week's park property transaction. You know, I think it's a big win for Millbrae. And certainly clears the last obstacle in the way of developing the community on land next to the park station. Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
I can hear you.
Everyone can hear me? Okay, so. Yeah, I understand that there are three city owned parcels next to the park station, right? And, you know, I was hoping that, you know, maybe we can get the R F Ps on on three of the city owned parcels there there. We get that revenue into the community A S A P. Because, you know, nobody needs the money for our schools, public infrastructure like roads and the water system and the public safety services. And then secondly, you know, I I just had a question about the R F Q that went out for the pipe yard some months back, but it never materialized into into one of those R F Ps. This is independent of park parcels, they should be humming along by now. Anybody know why there's a delay?
Mister Tam, council's not allowed to speak on items that haven't been agendized. So, but you know, separately, we'll get staff if there's a way, or if you can reach out to us that we can get in touch with you, we can give you an.
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I I I got your email address, should I, should I send you an email?
You can do that, and I will forward it to the appropriate staff.
Okay, that that sounds good. Yeah. Because, you know, because there's a great thing what's happening over there at that site, so. And that's why I wanted, that's my comment, that's why I want to make make that comment. Thank you guys all for your leadership.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mister Tam.
Okay, take care.
Bye now. Okay, thank you.
Hello. Hello, can I speak?
I. City Clerk, do we know who that is?
No, I see that as Huawei P twenty light. Do you want, is this for public communication? Or you're speaking on something that's on the agenda tonight?
Yes, public communication.
Yes, a public communication.
Okay, please state your name and for the record.
Okay, my name is George Li.
All right.
Please go ahead, Mister Lam.
Okay. My name is George Li, we are. My wife and I are long term of Peninsula residents. And we are the board of director of American Chinese International Cultural Exchange Council. Representing many Millbury residents. And we are very excited in the economic vitality of Millbury to benefit our community. First, I wish to congratulate the city council for obtaining the land just man and poverty from bar. This took a lot of work. We are happy that you will now seriously plan for construction near the station. While this agreement was not truly required for city to get started on building on some of the land near Millbury Station. It's certainly have. It will be very exciting for the city to issue a request for proposal, known as R F P. For a city owned station property. Every day of delay cost the city about ten thousand dollars in tax revenue. So I hope you will act quickly to ask for proposal to generate maximum tax revenues to benefit the community. This is ten thousand dollar day that belong to the taxpayer. So we urge you to act without delay. As you know, there are three city poverty. Two are perfect for commercial and hotel users. If they can be combined with nearby property own law. Is posted with an R F P soon and high necessary consultant to go forward with panic. Finally. There's not yet in a request for proposals for the pipe yard property to be developed into file tab. Only for a request for qualification was issued. This is a great use for that property that would create wood paying job in Millbury. When will there be a request for proposal? This higher poverty is not affected by the recent bar agreement. And we look forward to this advancing too. Both tax and this revenue are at stake. And you pay these days to pay for important city services. And have local school at time of budget difficulty. Again, congratulations and hope. You will act soon, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mister Li. Okay, I will learn to leave a little bit more time so the people on the phone can get their hands raised. If there is anyone else from the public. This is your last chance. Elaine, do you have anybody else showing up on your end? I'm still seeing the clock. Okay, with that, I'm now closing a public communication and moving on to consent calendar. For the two items that have been or the. A motion and a second to approve item five and item seven. Item five is to approve by motion the quarterly investment schedule for the second quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty one. And item seven is approval of street closure on the three hundred block of Broadway for Beats and Brews on Broadway. Beginning on July fourth, August nineteenth, September sixteenth, and October twenty first, twenty twenty one.
Move approval.
Second.
I I heard approval by Holibur, second by Feng. Elaine, if you could call the vote, please.
Councilmember Hallibur.
Aye.
Councilmember Feng.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Consent items five and seven are approved by the vote of five to zero.
Okay, so agenda item number six is appointments to city committees. I had pulled this two months ago because the alternate for economic vitality Karen Chan had hadn't been able to get back to the interview committee. She has, and I'm very happy to see our alternate move into the the full time slot in there. The, but I I at the, I hope that council will consider a different person for the. Alternate position. He was originally on the document that came to us to two council meetings ago, and I'm trying to find my notes. Economic development obviously is critical for Millbrae and welcoming welcoming new businesses is is critical, as is streamlining permitting. And filling in the missing parts of our business downtown. And I thought that the young gentleman Seiji Sakayama, when he interviewed for Planning Commissioner, was really amazing. In his understanding of the needs for Millbrae to bring in new businesses that attract his age group. So basically, our young adults are twenty somethings, and in fact, I'd expand that to include interest for teens and tweens. And I was really impressed with Seji Sakayama, and he was on our staff report two, two months ago for this item. He's actually a pretty incredible young man. He graduated from Mills High School early, he then went on to Cal and graduated early with a mathematics and computer science degree. But another really important thing in terms of our long term, our long term fundraising is the fact that he works for Google. I have long been trying to reach out to the city of Millbrae that if we knew where our residents worked, there is opportunity for fundraising with these big corporations. I say this as a former Hewlett Packard employee, that when you've got employees in leadership roles. That work for these companies, there's a good opportunity to bring corporate grants back into your city or corporate sponsorship. So looking at Beats and Brews, when we bring in more of these great corporations into our city leadership, we are opening that door into Google. So I would like you to consider. Exchanging the person for that you've put on to the alternate position to get someone who is young. Who understands the needs we need to do to 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 bring in businesses that they like, places where they will spend their money. Mister Sakayama clearly said at the Planning Commission interviews that right now he and his friends leave town and spend their money outside of town. And it would be great to have him attracting or identifying the businesses we need that will keep that money being spent here in Millbrae. Plus, it's really great when we have young people who go off to college and can afford to come back here in Millbrae and contribute to Millbrae. And finally. I have received comments from the public that the gentleman suggested for. The alternate position is somebody who did sue the city of Millbrae. And the message that that gives to other businesses, are we actually open to business? Or are we going to put somebody on who sued the city of Millbrae, who sued and fought against affordable housing and who fought against class A office space? So it is my request that you would consider replacing. The the one gentleman, Mister Freeman or Mister Peng with Seji Sakayami. Ms. Papen.
Um, due respect to the mayor, the subcommittee went through a big process here. We are very lucky to have many people applying, so I would move approval of the recommendation as it exists, and I'm hoping to get a.
Before there's a second, then I have to say something.
Oh, you have said a lot, Madam Mayor, and that's, I don't think this is appropriate, you're mentioning things the rest of us have not seen.
It's in his application.
The the letters you're referring to, I just don't think that this is appropriate.
Then I have a request, I I cannot.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to second the motion. I don't have, I don't have, I I I like evidence and I like, I would love for the person to say that they were going to bring business.
Okay, I understand discussion. So we've got a motion in a second. I have a a comment then. And I met with Freeman Peng, Angie Lee, Karen Chan, and Margaret Ning at Karen Chan's house. And at that meeting, Freeman Peng stood over me and threatened me. And I did file this report with the Sheriff's Department. I understand that you all have not been able to find it, but I experienced that. So you may vote how you will, I am happy to vote for the other people, the other two committees and for Karen Chan. But I cannot vote for someone who physically, who physically threatened me. I cannot do that. And I did not want to bring that up tonight, but that is what I experienced on March thirteenth, twenty eighteen.
And you filed the report?
I did.
Call for the question.
City Clerk, call the question, please.
Councilmember Hallibur.
Aye.
Councilmember Feng.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Is there any way I can vote yes for three and no for one?
Could you repeat the motion, please? Make your, you can make your, you can make your opinion known.
Okay, I I vote affirmative for the other three candidates, I vote against Freeman Peng.
Um, okay, the city council by motion approved the city advisory committee appointments, as recommended by the city council interview subcommittee by the vote of. Five to zero. With Mayor Snyder noting voting for. Three of the recommendations.
Thank you, City Clerk. Okay, public hearing, there are no public hearings tonight. Next up, under existing business is an informational report on the status of the city's traffic calming program.
Mayor, City Council, I'd like to introduce Mister Ke Lim, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council, Ke Lim again, Public Works Director. And now I would like to share my screen, one second. Cannot have you see my screen, right? All right, so tonight, this item in front of you, council, is an informational report, no action is needed tonight. And this is a information, informational updates on the citywide traffic calming program and the status of a couple of the. Of the grants that we received to implement traffic calming projects. So a little background about the Millbury Traffic Calming Program. So staff conducted a. Community workshop in July eighteen, twenty nineteen. So at which time we had quite a good turnout, we had over fifty people. And we received numerous comments, and we introduced a program to the resident, to the attendants at the workshop. And we received a lot of feedback, a lot of comments from our residents. And staff took all the comments back, and then we analyzed all the data that we received, comments, complaint, speeding, any type of traffic related issue. And then we again conducted a second workshop on October tenth, twenty nineteen. And at the October workshop, we actually turned. And at the October workshop, we actually turned it into a working workshop. It was more of an interactive type of workshop. We brought the attendance into different group and then we. Worked with each of this individual group in a smaller scale, hearing about their concern about the neighborhood traffic issue. And again, we proposed several solution to them. And again, we took all the comments back and then we. Analyze and look at the overall complaint and what we can do to help with neighborhood traffic coming program. And it took us a whole year to analyze the data and also due to COVID, we were not able to conduct a lot of the more intimate neighborhood type of meeting. So in October 13, 2020, we brought the program up program update back to. City council for review and city council subsequently approved the. The neighborhood traffic calming program and the toolkits. So with the toolkits in our hands, so we started exploring grants opportunity. And then I will be talking about a couple of grant updates. In subsequent presentation. And also, I just want to also let the council know that we actually conducted our first ever neighborhood meeting. And that is more focused on Park Boulevard complaint on February 18, 2021. And we intend to continue with the neighborhood meeting late spring and again this summer. So just a really, really quick little updates, also a little refresher for the council on the toolbox, our toolkits that we came up with. And this is available online. And if you remember, we talked about the three different tiers of a solution to speeding and traffic issue. There are tier one. Which require very low cost, little to no engineering design, and this could be example of. Changing out those faded roadway signage, advisory sign, regulatory sign, and also striping. And tier two type of proposal that we came out with will require some analysis, some sort of a very simple design. And some minor construction and that could be. That could be those striped median island striped concrete. Sidewalk extension or bolted out and nothing will be permanent. It will require some thinking, some analysis and some minimal cost to implement. And lastly, tier three type of. Program will involve very extensive analysis. Engineering design and also construction outreach and funding, and that could be one example that came to my mind. Would be a traffic roundabout or traffic circle. One example close by two S would be the one that. That was installed by Burlingame a few years ago on California Drive. So those are the different type of solution that we came up with on the. On the two kits for traffic calming. But the next slide. Just a really, really quick summary of the. Toolkits that we have, and these are just a really simple solution that we came up with from listening to our neighborhood complaint during this couple of workshops. And we came up with a couple of proposal and will be meeting with this various neighborhood group and to introduce the solution to them and hear about their concern. And then at the same time, we'll continue to look for grant opportunities to implement this project. And next I like to show some of the. Type two of tier two type of traffic calming features. I'm gonna start from the very top and you can see those are the reverse angle parking and you may have seen them around San Francisco and Berkeley. And this gets a little challenging for people to actually back into those angle parking. But the plus side is that the driver would pay very. Much attention to bicyclists, so. That would minimize auto and bicyclists accidents. And the second tier two type of proposal we have would be the speed feedback sign. And that's a solar power type of. Feedback to read back your speed to you so that you know that you are speeding. So when you are speeding, you would see that those numbers start flashing. So they are sort of telling you to slow down. And the next one is the rectangular rapid flashing beacon. We have a couple of those in town. The one that came to my mind is Geraldine in Richmond, and that has been installed at that same location for quite some time now. And I remember the project was actually funded by a state grant to the same route to school program. And then the other one to the right is a road diet in that we meant by reducing or choking down the travel width. To make the travel lane look artificially narrow and people tend to focus. And drive a little slower and then going down to the bottom one, which is a temporary speed bump and those could be tested throughout the city. And it's something that we are entertaining as we continue with the traffic calming program throughout the city. And then the one to the right, these are the strike bolted up, and I believe that many of us have seen one or two installation in the city. One that I remember is around Richmond Drive near near Taylor School. And the one to the right is those are stripe traffic circle and there's a tier two type of solution to it is not permanent. It can be removed and we could install that temporarily and let the. Traveling public sort of experiment with that and get feedback from them. And then if we decide to do something like that, we're likely gonna leave it out there for three to six months and continue to get feedback from the resident before we. Move on to a permanent installation. And then the very last one is a structure cane with bowlers and those are just raise attention to any type of crosswalk, so you would slow down for the. For the pedestrian. Next, I'm gonna just talk briefly about grants update. Back in late last year in 2020, staff submitted a couple grant application to CCAC and one of which is the TFCA grant. TFCA means Transportation Fund for Cleaning Air. And luckily, we received grant about $89,000 to implement two of the traffic calming project, and they will be shown on the next slide. We believe that I I believe that we brought that to council sometime earlier this year for grant funding agreement execution. So this is one of the two installation that we will be doing in our city, and this is gonna be happening sometime in late summer. And the first one is happening at Helen and Tioga intersection by making the intersection safer. The next project location happened along Millbury Avenue adjacent to the Millbury, very well used Millbury Spur Trail. Between the segment from Poplar to Elder Avenue and again, we'll be doing some. Crosswalk enhancements, striping and signage and stuff like that, and this is gonna be funded by the TFCA grant. And lastly, I want to talk about the another grant application that is currently pending with MTC. The project has been selected for funding. However, we are awaiting final funding agreement from MTC. So the project would. Would fund the traffic coming. Implementation at Park Boulevard. And just a little background in Park Boulevard, our staff has completed the tier one type of solution and Park Boulevard. By replacing those signage along the streets and also added Santa Li on park. And those have been done, but we are continue to receive feedback from our resident based on our February workshop with them. And luckily, one of our application is pending funding from MTC. And once we receive the funding agreements, that will be bringing the funding agreement back to the city council for for action so that staff can execute the funding agreement with MTC. So with that, I let's conclude staff report and I am open to any question from the public or the city council.
Okay, thank you, Public Director Key. Lim. Comments from council and then we'll go to the public. Councilwoman Pappen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So where would this turnabout be, this circular?
One of the roundabout that in our two kids is actually at the Park Boulevard Magnolia. Remember that very, very huge intersection by Cappuccino High School? So that's one potential candidate location for a roundabout. And we are very excited about that. And before we do anything, we'll definitely bring it back to the city council. We'll likely, if we continue to looking at the analysis. We'll likely do a tier two, which is a striped roundabout. We'll put planner out there and let our residents experiment with that for at least six months.
Do you not have any proposal for Meadow Glen and Broadway? I mean, I've seen some very confused drivers going around the wrong way. I mean, that would seem. More justifiable location for roundabouts.
Okay.
It's a very active, very, very active intersection. One martial arts and where do the office and especially if there's going to be a development. Where the Office Depot was. I really think we should be focused on that. I I like the Burlingame one. I understand it was quite expensive. But it's once you get used to it, it seems to work quite well. And I will ask too, because I know Market Street in or not Market Street, Van Ness. In San Francisco is going through similar projects right now. The sidewalk full bouts for the turn really seem to protect. The cross people and crosswalks, so. Please get down there and take a good look at what they're doing. I think they're just finishing up. But yeah, I really. I would ask where we are as far as that one intersection. Meadow Glen and Broadway. Do you think that's important? Is that on your list?
Councilmember Pappen, I don't remember on top of my head what we are actually gonna propose for Meadow Glen and Broadway between Meadow Glen. From actually from Magnolia to El Camino. There's some sort of proposal there. I just can't remember them. And also, I think that that roadway is extremely wide, so I I believe on top of my head, we are looking at adding lane to adding turn lane. To try to make the intersection a lot less confusing. So I I can't remember, but I'll look it up and share the information with all of you.
Okay, yeah, I do believe if you did a car count there. I think that would be not adding a lane. It's already confusing enough, but a roundabout. Similar to Burlingame's, I think would be really helpful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Hallibur.
Mayor, yeah, actually, that is a great comment from Councilwoman Pappen. I'm typically not a big fan of roundabouts. Something somewhat un-American about them, but I do find that to be. An appropriate location, and I think I view roundabouts as more of a traffic flow solution than a traffic calming solution. But yeah, I think that would be a good location or potentially for a traffic light. At that intersection because it is quite confusing to. Different drivers coming in different directions and turning. I would also like to prefer to avoid speed bumps if possible. I think others are typically. Unpopular, even if they're temporary and could be removed. But overall, great work. I love the designs on on Park and. Projects that were approved on Helen and and Millbury Avenue. Would be a great model to try to follow for future projects.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallibur. Councilman Vice Mayor Leva or Councilman Feng, any questions?
No questions. I I confer with all the comments. Those are good ideas, Gina and Ruben as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Feng.
I'm all good. I think it's it's. It's nicely put together. I think we're due for these traffic coming measure for a long time now. Especially near Helen Drive area and some of those. Area that Director Lim has talked about, so. Let's just try to get the grants from CCAC as soon as possible and we'll get on with it. Thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Lim, I've got a couple. For the project that's already funded for Tioga and Helen. I think that's great. I'm guessing that the grant did not include. The ability to fund green infrastructure, meaning the ability to collect stormwater there and treat it before it gets into the storm drain.
That is correct, and also those two are particular location. They were not slated for GI implementation because of the site location. They tend to be quite small. So for green infrastructure, a location for drainage and bio retention purposes, we tend to need larger area and larger landscape area. So we'll continue GI is part of our ongoing effort and we'll continue to address GI and also continue to seek outside funding for that.
I I am hopeful with my short time that I'll be on CCAG and with Councilwoman Pappen on MTC that. The infrastructure, the cost of doing anything to our roads is so expensive, but if the grant. People start looking at, can we kill a couple of it? Can we also get green infrastructure? Can we clean up the stormwater? Can we do that at the same time? Instead of maybe someday in the future having to go back and do it. It's my understanding that Tioga is our street most prone to overflowing. If we get those big, big rains coming, so it's it's just a dream. The TFCA grant. Is that a grant that we get automatically given to Milbrae based on either our our number of streets or our population? Or is that one of the competitive grants where we compete against other small cities of 50,000 people or less?
TFC and the Transportation Fund for Cleaning Air is a competitive grant. It's a region, region wide grant. It's very competitive.
Just to update the city council and the public. Big cities, really big cities get funds directly and they get a greater per capita amount. Than the the medium sized cities, which are greater than 50,000. And then those of us who are smaller, the money either goes to the state or to a regional entity or a county, and then we get to compete for each other. So I am really pleased that we are competing better. But I also bothers me that the pit small cities against each other for these very rare and extremely expensive projects. So congratulations staff on getting that in the future on staff reports. Can we just put a line in there saying this was a competitive grant or this was a per capita grant? And that can begin to educate all of us of just how difficult it is to fix our roads. Because small cities get the smallest share and only if we write a good grant. So I thank you with that. I'm opening it up to the oh Gina, I see your hand and then I'd like to open it to the public. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Pappen. Okay, members of the public.
Mayor, if I may, as a host, I can't raise my hand, so I apologize for.
Just wave. I'll look. I'm looking at you.
So I I wanted to make sure because I do think that, and I didn't think about it, but a traffic circle. At the gateway into our downtown at Meadow Glen and Broadway has a lot of merit. And so if that is a consensus, you know, which it sounds like it is. Key, I think we need to go back to the drawing board and and really figure that out because I I do think it's a great idea. And it could really be a nice gateway and entry point as well as traffic control. There is a consensus. I'd like to focus our attention and kind of move move in that direction as well.
Definitely.
Thank you, city manager. Councilman Hallibur.
Yes, I'd also like to mention there is a development that's been proposed at that location. So that could be either some type of, you know, mitigation. Required of that developer considering that it's already. You know, a busy intersection that likely will get much more busy once that development is built there. So there's something to keep an eye on, you know, when reviewing that development.
Excellent point, Mr. Hallibur. All right, opening it up to the public. I see that we have Janet Fogarty, former mayor Fogarty. Please go ahead.
Hi, first, I'd like to thank he for that great report. I'm glad that the city's following up on this, that it hasn't gone by the wayside. And congratulations on looking for and getting those grants. The other thing I wanted to mention is that my office is on the corner of Meadow Glen and Broadway. And I look out at that intersection when I'm not staring at my computer. And there are so many near accidents there. It is amazing how confused people get. And so I'd like to suggest that the city maybe look at. When you're looking at that intersection. Look at getting a consultant that deals with how people react on the road. Before you come up with a final solution because. You need to do something there. If you're looking at that intersection, you need to do something there that won't confuse people. The other thing is the signal at El Camino. At the left turn. To go north on El Camino from Meadow Glen is where the traffic most backs up. Certain times of the day, particularly around 5 o'clock in the afternoon. And it's a very short block there for the traffic to stack up, and sometimes it stacks up into the intersection. And so you might want to look at that too, is what the traffic count is and what times of the day it is. And if you want to look out through my office windows, I will make that available to you. Key, and I'll even give you a cup of coffee if you want.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Fogarty makes good coffee. Take her up on that. Thank you, Ms. Fogarty. Mr. Chan.
Uh, can everyone hear me?
You're coming in fine.
Okay, great. Um, so thanks. Director Liam for make this report. Definitely very interesting, the projects that are being proposed. Uh, definitely very interesting, the projects that are being proposed. Um, I did want to highlight uh, one sort of. I feel like there's the elephant in the room, which is El Camino itself and all the uh, streets of Milbury that go across. It. I know there's uh, major jurisdictional uh, issues involved, because it's technically a Caltrans road. But I think if there's any way that uh, some of the, there could be some mitigations for El Camino. That would make Milbury uh, significantly safer. Um, I can tell you uh, as a bicyclist, uh, crossing El Camino on one of our side streets is harrowing. Um, if you, if I do not push the crosswalk button, um, for example, at this intersection in front of Safeway. Uh, it, I do not have enough time to cross and I, there've been at least a couple of instances. Where I've been stranded in the middle of the, in the middle of the crossing. Uh, because the uh, green light is only green for long enough for a car to get across the intersection and clear it. But not a bicycle. Um, so it's sort of like the, you ha- and you have to remember to push the crosswalk button. In order to, you know, save your life, more or less. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out is the, the bulbouts. And uh, how debatably useful they are at times. Um, for example, I live really close to the intersection. Of uh, Victoria and El Camino, and there's a bulbout there to uh, sort of encourage cars. To turn right uh, from the frontage road on Victoria, uh, onto Victoria. And you know, every so often, there's a car that just sort of goes around the bulbout and then turns around. Sort of in a half U-turn and goes into the next frontage road. So I don't know what it takes to make these bulbouts uh, impossible to avoid, uh, but that's an example where. Uh, people don't seem to be paying attention or, or, you know, aren't following what is prescribed by the infrastructure. And then finally, I mean, there, that intersection too, I've noticed like there are people who aren't really stopping before they turn. Um, so yeah, those are my two comments around, you know, somehow making El Camino safer. And uh, thinking about how to make the bulbouts uh, something that drivers will actually follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Uh, any other comments from the public? If you can, please raise your hand if you are on the phone. I. Uh, City Clerk Tran, do we see anybody on the phone?
No, but if you are calling in, it is star nine.
And I'm gonna give it a couple of seconds to give people a chance to star nine if you're on the phone. And any other members of the public that want to comment on this? Okay, with that, let's see if I can close public comment without then having a few more hands raised. And I thank the council for uh, letting the last one go. I have a couple of final comments on. Um, i- in response, or actually council, any, any questions or comments after hearing public?
Quick question, I, I'm sorry, quick comment, Madam Mayor?
Please.
Um, Mr. Chan, um, we are planning on an El Camino diet, shall we say? Uh, El Camino in Milbury is the widest, largest part of El Camino in all of Samatyo County. So that is part of the future plan. Hopefully, we can get there sooner rather than later. So appreciate all your comments as always. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, anyone else from council? Okay, quick update again to Mr. Chan's comments. Um, I have received and I need, and I have looped in staff, but we haven't been able to move forward. The Department of Transportation, California Department of Transportation has agreed to meet with us. And talk about a range of transportation issues, including uh, the impact of managed lanes on Milbury. The return of the Officer Chet Cootie signs that have been removed for managed lanes for El Camino Real in general. And uh, what I'm calling cut-through traffic, which I think might be the official term. But the people who cut through Milbury on many streets to get between one oh one and two eighty and a couple of other transportation issues. So we'll be um, having that meeting, I hope sometime in April or May to start putting just your concerns, Mr. Chan. On the list of things we need to care about. Burlingame had a long process initiated by Caltrans. To work on their El Camino Real, which is only four lanes and has the big eucalyptus trees, which are beloved of the people of Burlingame. And are historic, are actually on the historic registry. And they include one block of Milbury, their plans. It includes from Murchison to Milbury Avenue, which brings to mind. One of Councilwoman Papin's issues, which is why are there three left turn lanes from Milbury Avenue to El Camino, but only one going north? I think it is time that we get Caltrans in the room and we talk about these issues. And it fits in nicely with the specific plan, which might be our next agenda item on what we might be able to do with El Camino. But to the public watching this, and I know that there are many of you who are pedestrian only, who contact me and say. I, I take my life in my hands crossing El Camino Real, and obviously we've lost people on El Camino in the last month and a half. Feel free, I'm sure you can reach out to any one of your council members. Feel free to reach out to me. When I get those comments, I send them to staff and we will put in this list of things that you want us to bring to the attention. Of Caltrain, which controls El Camino Real. So uh, with that, those are my comments. I thank you, go forth. And um, I hope that MTC will be very kind to Milbury in awarding us that three hundred and forty-seven thousand. Which is for around cappuccino. If the students are gonna come back in September or, or August, as we hope. Um, this is a great opportunity. Oh, one last comment. Being a reader of Nextdoor, not necessarily a commenter, there's a lot of confusion over the value of these various traffic calmings. And I'm wondering if staff could update our website and put more information on them. I know. Public Works Director Lim and uh, City Manager Williams and I have talked about this one conversation about some bulbouts. And I think on Samatyo Drive and the confusion it's causing. But let's see if we can bring the public along and understand what each one of these is gonna do, why it does it, and who we're trying to protect with it. So to me, I hear bobot, I hear giving a pedestrian a chance to cross the street without getting hit by a car, but the other, the public may not see that. So if we can do more education, I think that would be great. With that, if there are no other comments, uh, Public Works Director Lim, thank you for the update. Okay, moving on to agenda item number nine, if staff could get ready, this is an action. This is to look at, and it's a very long title. I'm gonna hold off reading it until we make the motion to approve. But it is about our EIR, which includes El Camino Real or our um, general plan updates. So staff, it is in your court.
Yeah, Mayor, before I introduce our Community Development Director, Ms. Darcy Smith, um, I'd also like to not only recognize her great work. And finally getting the scoped right and bringing it to the city council, as this has been the highest priority of the city council for several years. Also, um, would like to acknowledge Mr. Jim Harnish that is also uh, in the meeting. And uh, thank Jim for his patience and sticking with us and really uh, being a great consultant to us. As we've kind of rethought this, re-scoped it to get it right. And so I just wanted to recognize not only, uh, not only Darcy, but, but Jim Harnish, who's out there. Um, and the great work and partnership that the city has with him and his firm. So with that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Darcy Smith, our Community Development Director for our presentation.
Okay, thank you. Let me just get this going here. Can you see this presentation? Okay, so uh, my name is Darcy Smith. I'm the City Milbury Community Development Director. And I'll be making this presentation on what is a professional services agreement with Mentor and Harnish. And their sub consultants for advanced planning efforts. I'll summarize this on the next slide. This item before you tonight, which is an action item. Has the objective of the city council adopting a resolution that would authorize. The city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Mentor and Harnish as the lead consultant. For the preparation of a variety of items. It includes the general plan update, the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan. An active transportation plan, the housing element update, which we just started on. And related zoning code amendments and the SEQA environmental impact report. And it would also include the appropriation of funds in the adopted fiscal year budget for this year. From the city's Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and the General Plan Maintenance Fund to fund this project. I'll cover some background briefly. The current general plan was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, so it's about twenty-one years old. And a few amendments were approved, primarily the housing element, which based on state statute is required to be update. Updated in eight-year cycles. So that was last updated in twenty fifteen, and then there was a short update to the circulation element in two thousand nine. But this general plan is required to be updated more frequently to ensure consistency with current legal requirements. And the city's long-range growth plans, and typically those growth plans look at a twenty-year build-out. So with that in mind, in twenty fifteen, the city initiated a comprehensive general plan update. And included the previously mentioned downtown and El Camino Real specific plan. That was also previously referred to as the PDA or Priority Development Areas. And that's relative to the A-Bag MTC Plan Bay Area, and it included the program EIR. So I'll pr- just go over a brief timeline, starting back in twenty fifteen. The city council went through a competitive review process, um, interviewed several firms and selected Mentor Harnish. And their sub consultants for a one-point-three-million-dollar approximately scope of work. From twenty fifteen, the work started and went through about twenty nineteen, and that included various tasks. There was extensive community engagement with, which I'm sure many of you participated in. Um, a detailed existing conditions report was prepared and published. And a Phase One Public Input Summary Issues Opportunities and Vision Report was published. And those are all still available on our website and contain quite a bit of still accurate and very timely information. So after those items were prepared, there, there started work on the planning documents. And then the city discovered that we needed additional amendments to include additional items, such as the Active Transportation Plan, which I mentioned. And other s- more specialized studies. Due to all those additional revisions to the project scope and budget, there was even more work needed and that resulted in work largely stopped. In twenty nineteen and not restarted pending this effort tonight to revise the scope and the professional services agreement. Which has expired. So in case you're wondering why we aren't going through um, an amendment to an existing agreement. It expired last year, so we need a new agreement. But here I just want to pause and emphasize that all of the previous money that was funded has not been spent. So about a little over a million dollars has been spent, but there's still um, a healthy amount. I have about a hun- four-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars in that general plan maintenance fund and an unbilled grant funds. And I'll cover those a little bit more detail with the budget. But I want to emphasize here that this is unspent balance that will be available and will be used. Um, and no general fund balance is needed. And while you would ask, well, we've already spent a lot of money, you know, what do we really have to show for it? A lot of the work that was already completed is still relevant, lays the groundwork for remaining work and will essentially pick up where it stopped. With the inclusion of some really important new work tasks. And I'll spend the rest of the presentation diving into those new, new work tasks, so you really understand, you know, what this additional um, funding covers. So the scope, as you see in attachment to your staff reports, quite lengthy, and that's really what we've been doing. Uh, since I started in October, digging into the scope, figuring out what needs to be revised and expanded. Um, and as you, you are all aware, we have quite a lot of planning, um, projects underway. Um, and we also have a, a number of new state laws that um, we've been faced with. We also have the city's housing element kicking off with the regional housing needs allocation, which is two thousand one hundred and ninety-nine units. For the next housing element cycle. And I want to pause here and just say we, we will not have final approval of that RENA allocation. Until late twenty twenty-one. So while the, the, the general plan, you know, efforts were paused. Um, this is a great time to be starting this effort up again, um, knowing that the A-Bag Executive Board will be approving those final. RENA numbers, um, and we have a lot of work essentially to spin up all the planning and zoning for those two thousand one hundred and ninety-nine units. The future work will also respond to changing market trends and demands. Well, I think we'll all agree, they've been really accelerated over the last year. With the COVID pandemic, this plan has a twenty-year growth horizon. Um, I think over the next twenty years, we'll see even more dramatic changes in lifestyle mobility choices. Um, and Milbury is really poised to take advantage of that. Um, last. You have heard um, an earful about objective design standards and development requirements as they're influenced by state law. Recently, and, and the legislature is actually quite busy, um, this legislative cycle, looking at other state laws that we're responding to. But the Housing Accountability Act, SB three thirty and SB thirty-five have really led to cities. And actually throwing out even um, pretty good general plans and specific plans. And reworking them with objective design standards and requirements. So this slide will cover some of those objective standards. Um, we start with more general design standards and guidelines. But the city needs a number of different standards, which are listed here, open space, landscape and streetscape design standards. Um, some of which we tou- touched on the last item before council, parking standards. Floor ratio standards, which guide the size of development on private property. The objective design standards, which would cover commercial and multifamily land uses, which we've talked about in the past. And last is a more detailed streetscape master plan for the heart of the downtown, Broadway Avenue and El Camino Real. Which um, as has been mentioned, really needs some attention to it. Um, also, one of the bigger items that's been added to the scope that wasn't previously included. But is really, really critical within the downtown El Camino Real specific plan is the Infrastructure Analysis and Financing Plan. That really is the city's tool and our big toolkit to ensure that new development pays for the full cost. Of any new infrastructure and capital facilities needed. Um, and this is all the stuff that's, you know, really critical with new development, the water, the sewer, the stormwater. And this will ultimately likely lead to um, updates to our impact fees um, for this specific plan area. Which we already have in place to, in the Milbury Stationery Specific Plan. But this is really critical, and this is what the city's Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds will be funding, a little over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I also mentioned including the housing element update, and this is just a critical thing that all of our, all the cities in the Bay are doing now. Um, and it's actually caused um, that most consultants to be stretched really thin. So we're very fortunate to have Mentor Harnish available to help us with this. Um, and really fold it into the larger general plan and specific plan update. And that's, um, I don't want to say it's like a three-for-one, but we are getting a lot of efficiency in the cost here by including the housing element. Update in this larger efforts. Uh, most cities, especially with face with significantly high RENA numbers. Um, are looking at more comprehensive general plan, zoning code and specific plan updates, just like we're doing right now. Um, and the implementation measures are really important. When we look at this large planning effort. We need to ensure the zoning code, the zoning map, all those um, vertical related items are consistent. So this will all be folded in um, for a critical component. Last, at the city's council's um, strategic initiatives, priorities and goal setting session. Which was about a month ago, we heard from the council that they would like to ensure that we're really poised to get any grants that are available. So in response to that comment, um, what we've done to get a win, uh, you know, a big achievement this year. Is to spin off the Active Transportation Plan from the other um, larger efforts and prepare separate SEQA documents. To poise this for approval this year. And so we'll take quite a bit of time, as I'll show you on the schedule, to work through. Um, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee Workshop Planning Commission, but we do hope to get that to city council um, later on in the fall. So this shows you the schedule and all the phases here are, are, are very interlinked, and that's kind of what it shows. Um, but the bulk of twenty twenty-one will be done, will be spent. Um, going through the planning documents, as I mentioned, there's, there's three big ones here. The general plan, which includes the housing element and the specific plan, um, and the active transportation plan of finalizing those. And then working on the EIR and the environmental, EIR or Environmental Impact Report. That's a pretty big effort and that's gonna take about seven months to do, as you see here. Our goal is to have everything ready for final approval by the end of next year. Um, the housing element deadline is January of twenty twenty-three, um, but we're aiming for final approval in the fall. And you know, if we can get it done. And, you know, if we can get it done sooner, we will. But as you'll see, there's a lot of meetings on the bottom with the Planning Commission, City Council. And, you know, we'll work our best to schedule those. So last, I'll cover the budget. I'm I'm pleased to say we were able to balance this out again without touching the general fund. So I know this is a challenging time, as you've heard, because of the pandemic with the general fund. But I want to, I want to ensure the council and the community knows that we're not using any general fund sources for this. We're using funds that are really collected by the city through private development, which is the General Plan Maintenance Fund, that's a fee assessed on current construction of projects in the city and grants. We really went out and got new grants for this effort through the state funding. As you see here, we have the Local Early Action Planning Grant, which we anticipate being awarded in the amount of $95,000, and the SB Two Planning Grant, which is about $160,000, and a remaining grant balance from a Caltrans grant, about $150,000. So we have a fully balanced approach here that does not affect the general fund, which I just want to really emphasize that point, and then that we're using funds that really are allocated for this purpose. We can't use them for anything else. I know it's a little confusing because the general plan sounds so much like the general fund, but it's not. It's really just for this effort, and we've been fortunate to build up a fund balance here. So in conclusion, tonight's action is a request to the City Council to adopt the resolution to authorize the execution of this professional services agreement for the advanced planning activities that I've mentioned in the staff report and to appropriate the funds in the budget from the city's Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds and the General Plan Maintenance Fund to fully fund this. And that concludes my presentation. But Jim Harnish, who's the principal of Mentor Harnish, and his associate Brent Gibbons are present tonight from Mentor Harnish to assist if we have any questions for the consultant team. And and they have been working on this project for the last six years, so they're a a great source of information should the council have questions. Thank you.
The mayor is muted.
Thank you. My question was, city manager, did you have anything you wanted to add before opening it up to council?
I did not, mayor, not at this.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Smith. City Council will do comments and open it up for public comment and then close with an action. Councilwoman Papen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Darcy, could you bring up that timeline again, please?
Yes, just give me one second.
Sure. Oh, that's great.
Hold on, a little fancy. Let's see if this will work.
Kind of looks like a high-speed rail slide, though.
There we go. It's actually Salesforce Park at the Transbay Terminal.
Something we should have had here, but don't get me started. Okay, first and foremost, thank you so much, Ms. Smith. You, I mean, we are so lucky to have you here. Really appreciate all your hard work and effort. Now, I've been badmouthing the previous money we spent on a general plan. So I thank you that you found something worthwhile in the previous funding that was expended, because I had been told that it was useless. But you you're an expert, so I'm glad you found something that we can still use. Greatly appreciate that. So this new company, hopefully they have no, I mean, this is a fresh new company that, you know?
No, it's the same consulting firm.
Okay, so I just dissed on them, but hey, you know.
We've included a lot of more, a lot of items that previously were missing. So I'm very optimistic that with the with inclusion of items that were previously missing, we're gonna, you know, hit it out of the ballpark with a very successful, comprehensive planning effort.
Yeah, mayor, if I may, just just real quick, you know, I have made some comments, you know, relative to, you know, not not the consultant, not it just the, the thing was misscoped. And and so now we've taken the time to scope it correctly. As as Darcy had mentioned, based on changes of state law, our housing element numbers, there is a silver lining here, because, you know, Darcy did find some things that we can continue to use, but also prepare a very comprehensive general plan that's tailored to Milbrae that meets our needs. And this is our guiding document for, you know, several years to come. And so not all is lost, and and we're in, we're in good shape, and it is happy to say properly scoped.
Okay, thank you. Properly scoped, I greatly appreciate here. Hoping that this company that we're contracting with understands the uniqueness and the speciality of Milbrae as an intermodal center here. For a long time, we've hired consultants that don't realize the significance of this city and the aspects of the city. So please make sure that that is emphasized throughout here. Two comments, the Active Transportation Plan and the housing element. I'm just wondering if we could speed those up any faster than the current designation here. Transportation plans, there may be additional federal funding falling from the sky, which we can hope we become a part of. So expediting the completion of those aspects is exceptionally important as our housing development is. We have requirements that we are supposed to be doing here, and we have people that want to develop. So sooner rather than later, I don't know if that's possible, but it would benefit the city enormously if we could expedite both of those elements. I don't know if that's possible, but please know that we could benefit greatly if we could get those done sooner rather than later. Thank you very much. And thank you for all your hard work, Darcy, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor Oliva.
Thank you. Darcy, thank you so much. And my my initial reaction to the report was like, oh, we're hiring somebody new as well, Gina, because I think that what we haven't seen is any of the results. So thanks for digging them out. And I would agree, but my comments were going to be the same. Like, we don't, if we could expedite our Active Transportation Plan and our housing element, I would greatly appreciate that. What I would ask from the report, if it's possible, is so that we don't get lost in the minutia that we feel like we are lost, at least I felt like I was lost in. With, if we could get like a monthly or a monthly report so that this is, so we could see the progress. We don't have to dig it out. It's it's something that we could watch on on a regular basis. It's the most important thing for everybody's goals that we all, we all agreed upon. And looking at it like this, this schedule is like beautiful. I mean, it's like, okay, we know what our goals are. Or if we don't make them, we don't make them yet. I, you know, certainly think that we could probably expedite some of them. And if we could get a a planned result from everything once a month, that would be great. And not to say that we're paying a lot of money for this. So what are we paying for? So if we, if we could be, use our fiduciary and let our people know that this is where the money's going and this is what we achieved, I think it would be really beneficial to all of us and to our community. And I am very grateful for this. Thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to the next report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Holibur.
Thank you very much. Glad to see this is coming back, a very incredibly important project for our city. I think we're all in favor of, you know, speeding up certain parts of this plan, but it it appears that one of the major, you know, time uses, time sucks, or usages of time is the EIR. It's a long process. And so I don't, and I think that is required for most, if not all of the different aspects of this plan, I would think, especially housing, housing elements. So I don't know how feasible that is, but obviously that is critical, the land use, zoning maps, as well as the, I think, the downtown specifically. And there were some great ideas that we saw a few years back when these came to us, one of them being the sort of a gateway into our downtown around Meadow Glen and Broadway, here where the Office Depot side is that we were talking about before. So I think reintroducing some of those ideas that were, I think, great for our city would be very beneficial as we begin to work with developers in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Feng.
Thank you. So I just wanted to emphasize how important it is for our downtown specific plan to be, you know, front and center in terms of priority. As we try to come out of COVID, that would be one of the most important piece in order for us to regain regain economic vitality. Also, what Councilmember Papen has said a little earlier, and I agree too, that the uniqueness of Milbrae and the transit opportunity that we must be completely acknowledged in this general plan as we redevelop, you know, some of these priorities and then how we, you know, map out for the next decade, or maybe even longer, right? How this Milbrae is going to look like. So special attention must be paid to. I'm glad to see this finally coming together and getting started with it. I can't wait to, to see this getting implemented as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Papen, your hand is raised. Do you have an additional comment, or we just didn't lower your hand?
Sorry, I didn't lower.
Okay, all right. Before we open it up to public, couple of questions. And again, thank you for this. I I agree with Councilman Holibur that there was some really good work done in the previous version. I attended all of the design charades and participated with them and did the community walk with, I believe, a, I don't know if he's still part of the team. He had designed the Wharf and the Walk at Napa, which I have since been to, and it's fabulous. So if we can make sure that we capture that good work that was done for the public, who may not remember, a lot of what was discussed during that was creating more active spaces in our downtown. And I really took that to heart, and I believe that the Office Depot, when it finally gets to us, is actually incorporating some of what, who I thought was an absolutely fabulous consultant on that. And I'm, I'm really excited to see that project come to us. Couple of other things, the Active Transportation Plan. I agree if we could get it as quickly as possible. I know Park and Rec and the Art Milbrae B-PAC saw it and were not happy with it. That was a B-PAC C-CAG or a C-CAG B-PAC grant well before my time on council. So we have been hanging, I don't know if we've been paid that money or we're hoping to get that money, but word to the wise, they're going to start not giving money if cities don't get the task done that they have funded. So it's always, I keep quiet when it comes up at C-CAG B-PAC. On the the El Camino Real infrastructure and water, I'm assuming, but I just want to make sure that that is going to include bringing recycled water up. If we can get TOD one built, that brings recycled water up to the Taco Bell parking lot. We still have to get it to our major water users, which is the golf course and the two high schools. And then, I don't know if it's ever going to be feasible to get that water up to the elementary schools, but up to Central Park. So I'm hoping, Ms. Smith, that recycled water is going to sit high and heavy in that, especially as we go into yet another drought, pedestrian water, water, water. I have been talking at a lot of meetings lately about high-speed rail, and I don't know why it didn't dawn on me first, but the Milbrae specific area is our downtown. I always thought of it as that thing over there. But when I use, when I'm talking to the media, when I'm at High Speed Rail's board meetings, that's our downtown, and I hope that our new general plan will reflect that it is our downtown. So when High Speed Rail comes and says surface parking lot, they're putting a surface parking lot in the heart of our downtown. So another comment there. And then finally, on land use element, I haven't talked much at at City Council, but I am on a statewide commission for recycling market development. And one of our recommendations that will be going to the Assembly and the Senate is to include more recycling infrastructure into the land use element. Now, that law may never pass, but what that means is with some problems with AB 2020 funding, how people pay a nickel for a can and bottle, the whole law is intended that people can get their money back. And now most of those places in the California, but especially in the Bay Area, have closed. So if you are counting on the getting your refund for cans and bottles to put food on your table, it's very difficult. So from that is our recommendations to the state of California, that the land use element be updated along the lines of a housing element so that changes in zero-waste programs, which are a subset of climate change, are updated more frequently. But just be aware that that's there. It can also include things we used to, it's hard to remember, we had a fabulous consignment store, and she couldn't make it during previous recessions. But looking at reuse and recycling operations, typically their margin, their their revenue stream is much smaller than others, so it's very hard for them to compete. But if you don't have a goodwill or you don't have a Salvation Army, you have no place to take much of the reuse materials that our public wants to get rid of. So those are all things that would be considered in that land use element. It is not law yet, but I'm telling you, it is my hope and my lobbying efforts with my commission hat that we get this passed in California. With that, I think I got every, oh, and to comment about the length of time for the EIR. When the specific, the Milbrae Station area specific plan came through, I wasn't on council yet. The comment period was forty-five days instead of sixty. Then we heard a lot of complaints after the fact about the specific plan. I just make sure we consider, do we want a forty-five-day comment period or a sixty-day comment period? So that's my comments. With that, opening it up to public for the, her public comment. I am, I see Nathan Chan and Elaine, if you could please be checking the phones. Mr. Chan, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider, for this opportunity to speak to the council on this important matter. You've probably heard me talk, mention, talk about the general plan and the lack of progress that I was seeing for a number of years now. So I, I too am excited about this returning. And I also remember some of those general plan presentations from 2017 and 2018 and thought there were some really good ideas. So it's very interested to see the continuity maintained. Something that I wanted to bring to your attention was sort of the public engagement process of the general plan. You know, the general plan is an opportunity for the city to really reach out to communities that have historically been underrepresented in the planning process and be really proactive about this. At least what I saw in that diagram that Community Director Smith put up is that most of the public engagement is furnished, follows through open houses, the Planning Commission and the council. I think there should be significantly more public engagement than that, and an effort needs to be made by the city to reach out to communities that have historically been underrepresented. I know that, for instance, Mayor Schneider has alluded to the fact that Milbrae has a fairly significant Latinx population, but there are very few members of that community represented on council or let or the commissions, official city commissions. And I know in various other cities, like some elements of the general plan process are delegated to citizen task forces, like housing element task forces, general plan task forces. I'm, that's probably a huge scope expansion at this point. But, you know, this, these are other ideas that other cities are doing to maximize community participation in this very important process. So I just wanted to bring to your attention that I think that this is an element of what I'm currently seeing that probably needs improvement. And yeah, happy to discuss this with any member of the council at any time, at a different time and space. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Sorry. Is there anyone else in the public? Please, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. City Clerk, do you see anybody on the phones? No, I actually don't see any phone numbers in the participant list, but I could be missing something. Okay, I've given it a couple of seconds. Last call. If anybody wants to comment, I'm going to close public comment period. Okay, closing public comment period. Counsel, before we go to a vote, Mr. Chan actually remind me of one more of my comments. San Francisco Airport, with the help of resident Joe Teresi, we've been diving into the historic expansion of SFO and its impacts, and then trying to figure out the impacts on our neighborhoods. And it's fairly significant. So I know that I hear these anecdotal stories, Bayside Manor people saying, you know, I will sweep up all my leaves and then an airplane will take off and my leaves all go blowing. So they go blowing around. I hope that we will also, within the general plan, look at San Francisco Airport and the train stations, the various train services and their impact on us and try to come up with how our residents' lives can be improved if these entities ever did any environmental mitigation for their expansion plans. Because as far as I can tell, and so that the public knows, there are only three homes in Millbrae that qualify for noise insulation because of the way the contour lines are driven, are drawn by sound. Now, I'm heavily into this and I could bore you all, but the reason is that they only look at in-flight noise and only a particular frequency of noise and not the noise that most impacts us. So we need our general plan to really look at that noise section. I can't, I don't know if it's a stand, it's noise under the environmental element, I think. But let's really make sure that we look at that and come up with everything we can do to protect our residents. With noise, it impacts sleep and it impacts learning, and it makes our residents more susceptible to disease, and it makes it harder for our children to learn. So these are the new health studies that are beginning to come out, and we need to stand up for ourselves. End of sermon. Councilman Holber.
Yes, just a comment on the public input. I know we have the public input sessions scheduled as part of the timeline here, but, you know, we have done significant public input in previous years on the general plan. So I hope that is all, all has been memorialized and will be included in the feedback given to our consultants and staff working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holber. Councilwoman Papen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Harnish, my apologies. I hope you can prove me absolutely completely wrong, and this is the best general plan ever, fastest and all of that. So please, we look forward to working with you. And we're not all that bad.
I'm looking forward to coming back and joining you again on this project, so.
Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. We're, we're excited about it. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we are too, definitely.
Okay, if there are no further comment, or comments, then if I could have a motion and I'm looking for the action, it's a fairly long motion, where is it? City Clerk, if you've got it here, I'm trying to figure out where to start. Approve a resolution. I think I found it. Tonight, we need to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Mintier Harnish for preparation of a general plan update, downtown and El Camino Real specific plan, active transportation plan, housing element update, implementing zoning code amendments and related environmental impact report and sequel clearance in an amount not to exceed $1,300,000 and appropriating funds in the adopted fiscal year 2021 budget in the amount of $1,073,819 from the city's Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds and $725,393 from the General Plan Maintenance Fund to fund this project. If I can have a motion, please. Thank you, Mr. Feng.
Papen.
Thank you, Ms. Papen. Hopefully, we don't have to say that mouse full again. Any comments? Ms. Papen, I have your hand up. Okay, all right. City Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Councilmember Holber?
Hi.
Councilmember Feng?
Aye.
Councilmember Papen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Leva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Okay. Existing Business Number Nine is passed by a vote of five to zero. Thank you for reading that whole thing there. You're welcome, and thank you. And thank you all, and to staff and to Mintier Harnish and, and I'm looking for the name. Good luck with this. Let's go forth and get this done. All right, moving along. Agenda item number 10, authorizing the application for and receipt of grant funds from Millbrae Community Foundation. And this is an action item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, just for note, the authorization of the application is through a resolution, which is attached to the staff report. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Mike Sung, our, the city's finance director.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. Let's go ahead and get into the presentation. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Honorable City Council. So today, I'd like to talk to you about the authorization for the city manager designated to apply for and receive a grant from the Millbrae Community Foundation or MCF. So let's go ahead and go to the background. Is the background showing up here?
We could see your cover, but not the background for next.
We apologize for the technical difficulties.
Not a worry.
Seems like it's not.
Would you like me to share a screen?
Yeah, if you could. Elaine, that'd be great. Thank you.
Welcome. Jennifer, do you mind opening it then? Because you have it open. Oh, you know. All right, can you see this? We still see the same page, Elaine. Okay. Can you see the background now? At this point, I think you, you could probably, I, I don't think you're going to find a lot of us complaining about this.
Okay.
All right, I would, I would just wing it, Mr. Sung.
I do apologize once again for the technical difficulties. All right, let's go ahead and get started on the background piece then. So what had actually happened was there was a major fire structure, structure fire that destroyed the community center back in July of 2016. At that time, the Cultural Foundation, the MCF, had basically looked at helping the city. They basically immediately had stepped in to assist the community. And they created three funds, and each of the funds, the FFNE, donor-directed and the sponsorship funds, actually require a resolution to access to the city for the Recreation Center Restoration Project. So Republic Urban, the TOD or Transit Oriented Development Number Two developer, made a payment for the community's benefit to MCF back in November of 2020. City now wishes to use the proceeds that the MCF has collected for the Recreation Center Restoration Project. MCF has requested a resolution for council to authorize a representative, the city manager or his designated to apply for and receive a grant from MCF. So who, who are the MCF? Millbrae Community Foundation, they were the ones that they immediately stepped forward. They helped facilitate collecting donations for the restoration of the Millbrae Recreation Center. They actually have a structure already in place to accept online donations, and that's actually very important. They are also a 501(c)(3) organization. Now, this allows for one source for patrons and donors to go through regarding the restoration of the Millbrae Recreation Center. The city and MCF entered into a designated fund agreement back in March of 2020. So in conclusion, what we're recommending, staff is recommending that council authorize the city manager or his, her designated to apply for, receive and allocate funds for the Recreation Center Restoration Project. And further, to provide the MCF the reports as to how the funds were used together with supporting documentation as required in the March 2020 agreement with the MCF. With that, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sung. I see a member of the public, any, any comment from council before I open it up to the public? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Fogarty, opening up for public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to thank Mike Sung and Tom Williams and Mackenzie Brady for working hard to the way they need to be. I'm a member of the Board of the Millbrae Community Foundation, have been for about, I guess, 10 years now. And I am their pro bono counsel. So we have been working in the community for many years. We have put together a fund before the community benefits donation for fixtures, furniture and equipment to furnish the community center once it's built. And we have about $100,000 in that fund now. And I also wanted to, to give a plug for the fact that the Rotary Club of Millbrae is working with the city for a golf tournament coming up in May, and half of those funds will go toward the community center. And if anyone's interested in that, I can give them further information. I understand you, Mayor Schneider, are going to be there with borrowed golf clubs. Is that correct? And we, we thank you for that. I just want to make sure that people understand that this is not MEF. It is MCF, Millbrae Community Foundation, and people sometimes get confused. I just want to assure people who contribute to MEF that the funds for their schools are not going to community center. These, these are funds otherwise gathered from the, the community here in Millbrae from various sources. But again, I want to thank staff very much for working with us on this. We appreciate it.
Thank you, former Mayor Fogarty, and, and thank you and to all of you who are active board members or past board members of Millbrae Community Foundation. You're an amazing asset to our community. And you're always with all of the various hats, all of us, where you and MCF have always been marvelous to work with. So thank you with that. Any council comments before approving the resolution so we can spend money? Okay, seeing no comments, closing public. And I believe I heard Councilwoman Papen move to approve a resolution allowing the disbursement of funds. I don't have the actual verbiage of the resolution in front of me. Elaine, do we need to read that in?
I think it was just read prior to this.
Yeah, like, once you guys do a motion, I can, and you guys take the vote, I can read it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Papen. Second, was that Councilman Holber?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Tran, do you want to call the vote or read it and then call the vote?
I will read the vote first and read it. Councilmember Holber?
Aye.
Councilmember Feng?
Aye.
Councilmember Papen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Leva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The city council authorized city manager or his designated to apply for, receive and allocate funds for the Recreation, the Recreation Center Restoration Project by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Tran. And Ms. Fogarty, thank you so much. And that just reminds me, I better go try to see if I could at least hit a golf ball. And to everybody else, I think there are still some twosomes or foursomes, right? Okay, thank you so much. All right, moving on to new business. We're receiving an informational report on the 2020 urban water management plan. If staff could, does staff have a presentation?
Would you, again, I would like to introduce Mr. Kealim, our Public Works Director.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Kim.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. Good evening. Mayor Schneider and member of Millbrae City Council, Kealim, again, our Public Works Director. And tonight, we have the informational item. No action is required tonight for the 2020 urban water management plan. The last update we did was in 2015, so the plan is required by the state to be updated every five years. And this year, there are some, some interesting features that will be introduced into the plan. Therefore, tonight, we have quite a few people in attendance. First and foremost, I'd like to welcome former mayor Dan Koyk, who is also our basket representative. Mr. Koyk is in attendance today, just in case the council or anyone have any questions. And secondly, also, I'd like to introduce Mr. Nathan Metcalfe. He's with our city attorney office. And Nathan, Mr. Metcalfe, has been helping with the Bay Delta Plan since the inception of the plan for many years now. So he knows the Bay Delta Plan very well, in case there's any question. And lastly, we have our consultant, Woodward and Curran, Ms. Andre Johnson, who is helping us preparing the 2020 urban water management plan. So I will share my screen, and actually, I don't think you guys want to hear more from me, and Andre is very eloquent and articulate. So I'll have to run this to the background and what we are doing with the urban water management plan. So I will share my screen. Can everyone see, see the PowerPoint?
Very good, Mr.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to turn that over to you, Andre. So give me a hint if you need me to change a slide. So I'm going to move on. So this is again, like I mentioned earlier, this is an informational item. No action is required tonight. And we will be bringing the final drought plan back to council to conduct a public hearing in late May. So with that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. I'm Andre Johnson. I'm a consultant with Woodard and Curran. I'm preparing the city's urban water management plan update for the 2020 urban water management plan cycle. A little history on urban water management plans. These are legislative requirement in the state of California that date back to 1983, although the requirements have increased quite a bit since then. Each urban water supplier, which is defined as suppliers that serve at least 3,000 customers or provide a total volume in excess of 3,000 acre feet per year, are required to prepare urban water management plans every five years. The city of Millbrae falls into this urban water supplier designation as it supplies water to about 6,600 municipal connections. Compliance with the Urban Water Management Act is necessary in order to be eligible for any state grants, loans or drought assistance. Plans are typically due in years that end in five and zero, but the current urban water management plan cycle was extended by the legislator to allow agencies to report on their compliance with the 20% by 2020 water conservation requirements, which I'll describe a little bit more in a further slide. Next slide, please.
Yep, this is the next slide, Andre.
Perfect, thank you. High-level overall purpose of the urban water management plans is to evaluate and document a water supplier's reliability for the next 20 years, taking into account factors including available water supplies, projected water demands, taking into account planned growth in the community, and a range of factors that may impact supply reliability, such as climate, water quality issues and regulatory requirements. For Millbrae's urban water management plan, we are looking at water reliability for a 25-year period. So we are looking at overall reliability through 2045. And reliability is being evaluated under a range of scenarios, including normal water years, single dry years, or extended drought periods, such as the one that we experienced a few years ago. Urban water management plans also describe various water conservation efforts or demand management measures, as they're called in the act, which are being implemented by the city. In particular, the 2020 urban water management plans will document the city's compliance with the statewide water conservation targets, which were set by the SBX 7-7 legislation back in 2009. In addition, the UWMP will discuss alternative water supply options available to the city, such as your potential recycled water project. Next slide. One other element of the UWMP's One other element of the UWMPs is the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. This documents the city's procedures for responding to water shortages, ranging from shortages of 10% to shortages greater than 50%. This has been one of the most significant areas of change to the Urban Water Management Plan Act since the city's 2015 plan was adopted, as a result of legislation that was passed during the drought and lessons that were learned during that process. The Urban Water Management Plan also addresses regulatory requirements and state guidelines. And the biggest challenge in this Urban Water Management Plan cycle has been the adoption of the Bay Delta Plan by the State Water Resources Control Board. Nathan Metcalfe provide a bit more of an update of what that means, but it has potentially some very significant water reliability impacts to the city during this planning horizon. Notification of the plan preparation and adoption will be provided to the public, and the draft document will be made available for review and comment sometime in the next couple of weeks. Next. Nathan, can I turn it over to you now to give an update on the Bay Delta Plan?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor Snyder and Council Members. Can everybody hear me?
Coming in great, Mr. Metcalfe.
Great, thank you. So the, the Bay Delta Plan is a pretty detailed issue. It started in 2012, the current revision, and the State Water Resource Control Board has a legal obligation to update the Bay Delta Plan. And what it is, is a it's a water quality control plan for the San Francisco Bay Sacramento, San Joaquin Delta Estuary, which is called the Bay Delta Plan. Normally, the regional boards do this, so if you're familiar with the basin plan here in the San Francisco Bay area, it's similar to that, but since this is on a larger scale and encompasses multiple counties and multiple water basins, it, the State Water Resource Control Board is the entity that's responsible for that. So what they did in December of 2018 is they adopted the Phase One of the Bay Delta Plan, which is the San Joaquin side as opposed to the Sacramento side, so the tributaries on the San Joaquin. And what we're concerned with here as far as the San Francisco Regional Water System is what's required on the Twomey River. The adopted Bay Delta Plan has a 40% unimpaired flow requirement on all the tributaries. And that's in the months of February through June. And that has some pretty severe water supply impacts. The San Francisco Public Utilities Commission has done an analysis on, on, on these impacts and has found that, that the regional water system is okay in normal years, but would suffer shortages and single dry years and multiple dry years and require rationing in those dry years. So that creates some pretty significant challenges for this urban water management plan and basically water supplies. The, there's a lot of uncertainties associated with the Bay Delta Plan, even though it was adopted. There was 12 lawsuits filed against this state board, both for the plan adoption and for the environmental document, which it's a secret document, but it's called a substitute environmental document. That law lawsuit was, those 12 lawsuits were consolidated and there, they haven't really gone very far. They're still trying to get the administrative record together, so it's uncertain how that, that's going to turn out and at what timeframe. There's, the Bay Delta Plan is also not self-implementing, so even though it has a, you know, a program for implementation, where the water comes from isn't quite determined yet, so there needs to be a water rights proceeding with the state board, or it could happen through a 401 Clean Water Act certification, which relates to a FERC licensing on, and Don Pedro on the Twomey. That process has started, but both that and illegal challenges to the plan itself likely have a number of years and make it somewhat uncertain as to when and how this will be implemented. The state board, when it issued the plan, said they thought they'd implement it in 2002, and San Francisco, for their planning documents, is, is assuming that the, the plan will be implemented in 2003. The other thing that makes the plan implementation somewhat uncertain is when the state board passed the resolution adopting the plan, they left room for voluntary agreements. And they, in fact, directed the state board staff to negotiate with natural resource agencies and the water right owners on the systems. A set of voluntary agreements that they could take back to the state board to analyze as a potential alternative to the Bay Delta Plan. And then in March in 2019, SFPUC, along with the irrigation districts on the Twomey River, actually submitted a plan that's, is now called the Twomey River Voluntary Agreement. Those negotiations are still ongoing, so it's unclear how those will be resolved, or when, or if the state board will take up those alternative plans to be analyzed as a substitute basically for the Bay Delta Plan. So all that is really to say that there's a lot unknown with the Bay Delta Plan, but unfortunately, at this point, it is an adopted plan that San Francisco is, is, has analyzed and is using the numbers as far as water supply for the wholesale agencies. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalfe.
We have one more.
No, please go ahead. That's just what I was gonna ask.
Sorry, I cut you off key.
No problem. So like Andre Johnson mentioned earlier, the draft will be made available for public review and comments in the next couple of weeks. It was the end of April. And staff is planning to bring the final draft Urban Water Management Plan and the Water Shortage Contingency Plan back to City Council for a public hearing to receive comments and to formally adopt the, the plan. And with that conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lim, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Metcalfe. City Manager, I'm gonna go into public or council comment and then public comment. Did you have anything you wanted to add before we go to Councilwoman Pappan?
I don't, Mayor, not at this time.
Just making sure that I can't see your hand. Okay, Councilwoman Pappan, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question. Because we have such strict housing requirements these days, and those of us who just got off the campaign trail, how does this impact our water supply, our water costs, which are still outrageous, and our public is just, it's painful when the water bill comes. So how does this impact our residents? Number one, and number two, with ongoing development and new housing coming to fruition, what does that do for our bills moving forward? Please?
If I may, I can attempt to answer that, Mayor. So I am very glad to report that at the last Friday, SFPUC Basque Workshop, actually, that was the workshop number five for the Urban Water Management Plan this year. This is really unheard of. We have now had so many workshops to talk about Urban Water Management Plan in the past. So at the last Friday workshop, a lot of agency, including Basque agencies, start to bring out the Plan Bay Area 2050, and we start to talk about the Rena numbers, because we know that MTC tried to tie the transportation funding to the Rena number. So now, among the many agency in Basque, our 26 toughest, we are looking to have a cohesive voice and try to push MTC to also, you know, include the water rights issue in the future Plan Bay Area document. So there'll be more discussion to be had on this topic.
So what does that mean for the residents right now?
Currently, I don't think there is any immediate impact right now. This is more of a long-term projection based on what Mr. Metcalfe mentioned on Bay Delta Plan. If we have to provide 40% unimpaired water flow to the, to the, to the river flow, then we're gonna be experiencing more than a 20% cut in our water supply. We do have a 3.15 million gallon per day water assurance from SFPUC as our reliable source of supply. But so far, we have been exercising various models of drought scenario. So we have looked at up to a 20% reduction in water supply, but with the Bay Delta Plan, we are talking about doubling the cut in the water supply. So this is unprecedented. We are still working on that. So one of the option is to identify alternative water sources, for example, recycle water, sewage harvesting, that's sort of alternative water supply. So there are a lot more work to do before we know definitively how to answer the, your question.
Well, I understand.
Well, Councilmember Pappan, I, I guess I would address it as, we don't know. Currently, the city is studying its water rates. And so, once that is done, we will be bringing our water rates and sewer rates to the city council. I don't know yet, and I see that Mr. Quigg, our representative Basque, is, is in the meeting. We buy our wholesale water from SFPUC. And so if they increase their wholesale water rate, then that would mean that that cost to the city increases. I just don't know right now, or even if we can answer the question, if there's any anticipation that, that SFPUC will be raising their wholesale water rates, but
Of course they are.
Watching it, but I don't know.
Let's just, it's not a big even money bet. Of course they are. I get we have to do this by law, so we're gonna do this. But we need to report to our residents sooner rather than later that what is on the horizon, and it doesn't look good to me from what you're describing, as far as our water rates, our costs, and is there an end game ever? I mean, it's really getting so painful every time a water bill comes, and Helen Habib just sent me an email, you know, trying to charge her payment, and then there's a fee on top of that. But, you know, it's just like one thing after another. The public is not happy. We have not shown in any way, shape or form what we're doing to try to gain control over the water rates. So we have to do that as well. I'm sorry, but thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappan. Councilman Holber, I saw your hand up, but it looks like it's down. I don't want to miss you. You're okay?
Yeah, no, I was gonna ask about the Rena numbers as well. It just seems like, you know, it doesn't really compute if we're being asked to add 22, 2200 housing units over eight years at the same time that our water can be cut dramatically, especially during drought years. But it sounds like that is being addressed. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I, I mean, in our previous item, that's why part of that general plan was to now study our, our infrastructure capacity. So, you know, future water capacity, sewer capacity. So you bring up a very good point in something that through that general plan process will be studied. I mean, we, we have to be able to serve, you know, the new population and new development. And, and if we can't do that, I don't know what the state's gonna say, but it's gonna be a, a question that many cities, I think, will pose back to them. You know, the, the way municipalities obviously operate.
And we haven't even begun to talk about desalination. Mr. Conneran?
Yeah, just wanted to add a comment. I mean, we're really, while the, the water rates are, I can't say are totally unrelated to this issue. This is really an issue of supply, and it's not even really related to your normal year. It's supply during the drought years. And I think the purpose of the presentation tonight is to show you that in your Urban Water Management Plan, you're gonna see some pretty dire estimates of what might happen if there's a severe drought. And, and so I think that's really the message. There's a separate rate setting process that SFPUC goes through that affects your annual water rates, and that's, that's again, I think unrelated to this, although, you know, it's all about water. But just want to say, the message here is potential shortage during, during droughts, and, and that the potential cutbacks as a result of this Bay Delta proceeding are potentially quite severe. I, I think that's an important message, make sure everybody understands.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, and then adding to that, I mean, as it relates to rates, right? And then we saw this during the, you know, 2010 era, where there are significant droughts, we have to cut back on our water supply. As we cut back, municipalities cut back on their water supply upwards of 20%, less water is purchased. As less water is purchased, there's less revenue going to SFPUC, but they haven't reduced their cost, meaning that water rates go up because there's less consumption, less revenue coming in, costs remain the same, so, so rates had to go up. And so, you know, that's, that's the dilemma. So a drought is, is costly. But we will be monitoring it, we'll be watching it, we'll be analyzing it, seeing what we can do. I think right now, we buy water for $4.10 per HCF, which is 764 gallons. And, and we have another $5 fixed rate and, and capital costs to that. So we are analyzing, we, we understand the issue for sure. I want the council and the public to know that we understand that issue, and we'll be working hard to figure out how we can economize and keep our rates as low as possible.
Not to put, I see Mr. Quigg, but let me hang on, former Mayor Quigg. Vice Mayor Leva or Councilman Fung, any questions or comments?
I, I think I'm good. I think all the comments are very worth, worthy of what I was thinking.
Okay, and Mr. Fung, and then Mr. Quigg.
Yes, I think one thing that we should stop thinking a little bit about, and it's not an easy solution, but one way to look into that is how to recycle some of the rainwater on some of the larger developments and use it for landscaping or other purposes. We should start thinking a little bit ahead about that, especially for drought seasons such as this, that, that we're anticipating coming up in the future. But yeah, I like to, I like to see what, you know, other potential solutions are available. So I'll defer that comment.
Mr. Quigg, I'm, I'm not gonna consider you part of the public because you're our Basque person, so please, you have, please, please speak up. I can see that you're on mute, though.
Okay, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak a little bit. The biggest concern that we have with this issue is, Kim Lee explained, was that this Bay Delta Plan is gonna be severe. If it's implemented the way it seems to be going, the reduction in water to 1.2 million residents will be severe. We will see at least a 20% or greater reduction in water. So, you know, if you talk about, you know, adding additional units to the city, it's gonna be detrimental. Also, the other thing to consider is that the Basque Agency and the San Francisco PUC is working diligently with the state so they can work on a plan that is more acceptable, so we don't have flow going down between February and June unimpeded, because that would definitely reduce the water supply to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Quigg. To staff and the consultants, a couple of questions. Clearly, you've heard from us the discussion of recycled water. Does that fit within the plan that you're gonna bring back to us? I'm, I'm, I see Ms. Johnson shaking her head. I'm not sure who to call on. Mr. Lim?
Why don't you go ahead, Andre?
Yes, the Urban Water Management Plan will discuss the potential supply availability from a recycled water project within the city. However, because the project is not far enough along to have a full adopted plan of its own, it's not included in the supply reliability tables, but the potential will be discussed within the document.
To me, all of this falls under climate resiliency work, which we haven't, as a council, really dived into. Of course, I work in this field, so I love this stuff. But do we currently, and this is probably more for Ms. Smith, have, are all of our design guidelines for commercial, new commercial or significant retrofit, include water conservation, storm water recovery, which is what Councilman Fung was alluding to, which maybe can carry you through spring. Are we doing everything we can right now for new development and remodeling, commercial and residential, that at least get us a little bit prepared for the future? I see Mr. Quigg. Go ahead, Dan. You're on, you're on mute, Mr. Quigg. We love that mute button.
Water recycling is a main thing that we should consider. There are several areas in the city of Millbrae that would benefit by recycled water, all of our parks certainly, and also the golf course, I'm sure would be interested in recycled water. The biggest problem we have is the municipality is that our sewer treatment plant is so far away, so the cost to provide that water to our parks and also to the golf course would be very expensive, because the infrastructure to bring that water here would be very expensive. And I'm sure that maybe Kim Lee can give you a ballpark figure, but it's gotta be but it's got to be many, many dollars to take care of that. And, you know, eventually, at some point, if we get cut back, if the water delta, if the Bay Delta plan goes into consideration, we may have no choice. Maybe that'll be the only alternative to continue to get water to the city.
Thank you. And I know Ruben, Councilman Hollibur and I met with Public Works Director Lynn and the city manager about projects to put forward for the Federal COVID Recovery Act, the Infrastructure Act that's currently being debated. And I don't know if we're ready for public on that, but one of our top projects to give to Congresswoman Spear is tertiary water at the sewage treatment plant and the piping system. But correct me, and we were on a deadline that got extended. Mr. Lim, can you update us on that?
I definitely may. We are submitting some project funding requests to Congresswoman J. K. Spears' office for the recycled water project and as well as water tank replacement. And the deadline to submit is like eight tomorrow.
Good.
Mayor, Council, just on that note, so we are, we're asking for, you know, approximately $45 million in funding to retrofit our sewer treatment plant to tertiary water that would be acceptable, you know, at acceptable levels for landscaping. That is a commodity. I mean, there's a price.
Other cities, if I could interrupt, if everybody could please mute themselves, we're hearing another conversation.
So, you know, we would put meters on that. So, as there's a cost associated with it, there's also another revenue associated with metering that water that the city could get revenue to pay, you know, for that infrastructure. So, that project, and then, of course, undergrounding high-speed rail are the two major projects that we are submitting for funding as well as a handful of others.
Thank you. The, the other two things I would bring up, I always love it when the city pushes rain barrels, but rain barrels, from a residential perspective, really don't last very long. But I know that we have talked about bringing on an architect, landscape architect to help with some of our residential designs. We can be doing more with swales. And to me, the only reason a swale might work, San Bruno gets a significant amount of its drinking water, its potable water from wells. I don't know where our aquifer is compared to their aquifer, if we are a shared aquifer, or suddenly they're using a different aquifer. But if we're going to do aquifer restoration, I'm not using the right word, any of these detention ponds that we build for storm water that are helping to recharge an aquifer will prevent us from sinking if the aquifers begin to collapse. I worked at San Jose, we had three-foot drops in different neighborhoods because of collapsing aquifers, which is something they talk about in the Central Valley now. So, there are a bunch of resiliency actions. Will all of them be discussed in the water plan, or will that just come back in the general plan? I'm happy if it comes back in either of those. The public needs to understand that there is a cost to climate change, and these are the real costs that we are dealing with, and it's painful. The last thing I would say, I have a friend who's a director at East Bay Mud, and during the last drought, the number one concern they had was to save the trees, let the rest of the landscape die, but save the trees because it takes that much more time to regrow a tree to do its carbon absorption than it does a lawn. To me, lawns, you know, we want to get rid of lawns, but golly, if we don't water them, no big deal. But a bush, but a tree especially, and I would like to see that in our plans, we have a plan to maintain the critical landscape and critical landscape or trees for the various things that they do, from cooling, heat islands, et cetera, et cetera. So. I don't know, this was an informational-only, correct, Key? OK, and now I do see Ruben. Mr. Hollibur, please go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick comment. We also may want to start looking at onsite water recycling for, you know, larger developments, maybe perhaps incorporating that into our building code. Fully in support of a recycled water project like one we had discussed. It is extremely expensive to bring water over from our treatment plant across the freeway, across the train tracks to the sites where it needs to go. But if it can be done localized onsite within development areas, that could make a big difference as well.
Thank you. It's my understanding that Sarah Station talked about purple piping the entire project, which means if they did separate out, say, their, I don't know, sink water from their toilet water, they could do some onsite reuse. But again, if the plan can talk about that, and if the technology has improved, are we pushing purple pipes in buildings?
Well, yeah, Mayor, the TOD2 was required to place that purple pipe infrastructure for irrigation purposes into their project, just as on the West Side, TOD1 was also approved for installation of reclaimed water pipes.
OK, thank you. Councilwoman Pappin?
Thank you. Is it a part of this plan to promote rain gardens or underground drainage pipes? You know, since water's going to be so limited, I just had to put in another French drain, something like that where we, the public can benefit and yet save water in this time of drought? Is that any part of it, or have we made any moves in that direction?
Would you want to answer that, Andre?
Sure. This plan is really focused on documenting the actions that the city is currently taking in the water use efficiency realm, not as much on the long-term potential actions beyond what's in the immediate planning horizon. I think these are things that can be discussed in general in there, but would probably be evaluated in more detail through a separate process.
And if I could just piggyback on that, I think one of the council members mentioned our general plan. And as, you know, we talked about earlier, the way we've scoped it, and now we're looking at our infrastructure capacity, that is where also that element would be appropriate to address those issues.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? I don't think I've opened it up to the public, if there's any public comment. And for the public, this will be coming back to us. Do we have an idea? It's, it's getting late. What, when is it coming back to us, in May?
I believe May 25th, the second council meeting in May.
OK, thank you, Mr. Lim. All right, with that, if there's no further discussion, thank you, staff. Thank you, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Metcalf. It is what it is, isn't it? To the public, I lived in Mountain View. The water that they are going to allow into the delta actually does come down to San Francisco Bay. Without that water, the South Bay is very shallow, and it doesn't sweep out the bay. And we would get red tides that would last for weeks on end during droughts because the fish die from lack of oxygen, and it stinks. So, there is a reason to let water go in where nature intended water to go. And it means we're going to have to be really careful with our water use. There's a real reason for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
OK, moving along. Last item is item number 12, review and affirm citywide positions opposing Senate Bill 82, petty, the petty theft action. Staff, do you have a presentation? And I think I saw Chief Kunkel.
Yeah, Mayor, I will start here and just be very brief because we do have a closed session item. But California State Senator Nancy Skinner introduced SB Senate Bill 82 that would downgrade some felony robberies that do not involve weapons or assault with great bodily injury to only a misdemeanor. So, it would take it from a felony to a misdemeanor charge of petty theft. The proposed bill would also prohibit the act of petty theft from being charged as a robbery or burglary. So, under this new proposed legislation, which is currently in the Appropriations Committee, and there is no target of when the Appropriations Committee will release this. So, we hope that it will not leave the Appropriations Committee, and the bill will just die because many of the robberies, as you know, that occurred, you know, throughout the region, the Bay Area, and here in Millbrae, are street robberies where the victims have their property ripped from them. These criminals are not using weapons, but the use of a weapon in terms of creating bodily injury is irrelevant because many of the victims or many of the criminals do not use weapons. And these people have been brutally attacked and violently assaulted. And, you know, taking that and making that only a misdemeanor, we believe will cause, you know, significant issues and only embolden the robberies. And also, as we know, especially over the past year, city data, national data, state data shows that a lot of these types of crimes are against our Asian community and against our senior population. And so, this particular legislation, I think, a lot of unintended consequences with it. I think an increase in crime due to the pandemic that we've seen and the violence against, again, our Asian population and senior population. This legislation is dangerous to the safety of the Millbrae community and communities throughout California. And we have drafted a letter that was sent out to the city council before the meeting this evening that we would like you to authorize for the mayor's signature. This is just bad legislation. It, you know, crimes against our community and members. It's just a dangerous piece of legislation that we are highly opposed to.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Before I call on council members, did everyone receive the draft and have a chance to review it? OK, I'm not seeing any face. I'm looking at your expressions. All right, Councilwoman Pappin?
Yes, thank you for, I'm glad we got this on the agenda. This proposed legislation is completely toned up in the recent and current environment and victimization of our Asian community as well as our seniors. So, I strongly oppose the legislation, and I would prefer that if the council has agreed, that we all sign on to this letter and get it off.
Councilwoman Pappin, thank you. Do we know when this might be going to the floor or to a committee? Do we have any idea of the timeframe?
No, as of right now, Mayor, it is in the Appropriations Committee, and it is dormant as of right now.
OK, in that case, we have time for all five of us to sign it.
Yep.
So, I would support that. Vice Mayor Leva?
Yeah, I think that this is, the timing is really crucial. It's so sensitive in our community right now. And anything that we could do to oppose this kind of legislation to help protect people that could have or have been victimized, I am 100% for. So, I compliment our council members for all signing on to this. I hope that everybody's signing on to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fung?
You know, I think public safety is our number one priority here. This legislation is definitely in the wrong direction. You know, we've got to take every measure possible to protect our most vulnerable. And this legislation is absolutely in the wrong direction. And I have been in with many of us, this city, as well as outside, even of Sematell County. People are extremely concerned, they're scared, they're upset with these legislations that continues to let these, right, decriminalizing these activities. They're actually attacking our communities. And so, 100%, this is definitely in the wrong direction, definitely oppose it.
Thank you, Mr. Fung. Mr. Hollibur?
Yes.
I know you haven't raised your hand, I just want to make sure you have a chance.
I agree with all of the comments that have been made. I know there are, there have been a number of crimes recently against Asian, American community, very similar to the crimes mentioned in this law. I know there are a number of, you know, common sense criminal justice reforms that do make sense in this case. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a, earlier today, I asked Mr. Williams, but I also called Mr. Kunkel, our Chief Kunkel, Chief, if you could join us. I agree completely with the letter and all of this, but I also wonder, because we don't see the data, we have another group that I think might be targeted, and those are people with disabilities, and I hope that maybe no one is. But I look, if, from my days of lobbying for the environment, the environment, we give our elected officials as many reasons to support what we want them to do as possible. And I can shut up if you say, no, there really aren't crimes directed at people with disabilities. But my understanding from my friend, former Mayor Sue DeGree from Pacifica, who works at Parca, that they, that community too can quite often be targeted.
I haven't seen any of that in Millbrae. What I will tell you is criminals prey on the weak. So, if they perceive you're weak because of a disability, because of your age, because of your stature, that's who they're going to go after. Because it's much easier to take some, take things from someone who either doesn't have the capacity to fight or doesn't have the capacity to fight back well. There's less danger, there's less downside for you. You can get in, steal, and get away quicker. So, I thank the council for doing this. I'm not, I'm in kind of a wacky spot because I work for an elected official at the sheriff's office, plus I work for you guys who are elected. My role is to enforce policy, not to develop it. But it's encouraging for us to go and enforce the law, to have the support of the council for things like this because we do see the victims, and we do see the trauma that these kind of crimes inflict on our community. And it hurts, it's hard to see, and that's why we really go at these things hard and do what we can to get people in custody. So, thank you for that. But I don't know that people are being specifically targeted if they're disabled or not. And I have no data on that, and I haven't heard anything in not only our city, but the county or the region on that.
Well, I'm very glad to hear that. So, with that, I fully support the letter with all five of our signatures. If we make a motion to do that, I would only ask that council, please try to get down there quickly so that staff can get this sent and get it off their work plan. I know sometimes some of the proclamations are sitting around for a couple of weeks. Sometimes I'm the bad one, not getting in there. But if we could commit to getting in there this week so that our city clerk can get it on the way, that would be great. With that, if they're opening up for public comment, if there's any members of the public, I know we had two people that spoke earlier in support of this action during comments for agenda, items not on the agenda, in support of this. I'm giving people time, if you would like, if you're from the public and you would like to speak, please raise your hand or somehow, is it star nine, city clerk? Star nine your phone, and we will listen for you?
Mayor, I don't see anyone.
I don't see anyone either. I'm just giving, after earlier today, I'm just trying to give a little bit more time. OK, all right, I see no one raising their hands. I'm going to close public comment.
Move the whole of the letter in opposition.
OK. Motion made by Pappin, seconded by Fung. Elaine, if you, any further discussion? If you could please call the vote.
Councilmember Hollibur?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Leva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The city council adopted Attachment 2 of the staff report as the city's official position opposing SB 82 by a vote of 5 to 0.
Excellent, thank you.
Mayor, Council, we will revise the letter to just some minor amendments that it comes from all the council. It'll be ready to go tomorrow. So, at your leisure, please come in and sign it. We can get it up to Sacramento.
Excellent, thank you. OK, city council, we are at 9:49. We have another closed session, and we all started at 6 o'clock. Would you like to forego council comments?
Yes, yes.
OK, I'm seeing all shake. It's usually my favorite part, but I will forego it tonight. Before we close, tonight, we're going to close in honor of, I'm going to go first with Mary Alexander. She's a longtime Millbrae resident. Her son Marty is with us, and her daughter Roberta still lives in the house on Hacienda. Mary is a longtime family friend. In fact, we have known each other since we were, I was a kid, Marty was a kid. We lived in Pacifica, both our families moved over. She introduced my mom to the world of the League of Women Voters, was a lifelong League of Women Voters advocate and a strong community member. And we had, we had a service for Mary, or Marty had a service for Mary on Sunday. Just an absolutely beautiful woman. Just an absolutely beautiful woman. So we're closing in memory and honor of Mary Alexander. And we had other really sad news last week that we lost Assemblyman Gene Mullen. We have two Mullins who are assembly members. Gene Mullen was an assembly member in the early 2000s, a former history teacher at South San Francisco who so strongly believed in government and believed in young people getting involved in government. And I will tell you, over the years, I would get handwritten notes from Gene Mullen and I, just an absolutely amazing human being and I'm sorry, my best to his family, to Kevin Mullen, our current assembly member, and to his wife, Jessica, and to the little ones. At least Gene got to see his grandchildren. So closing in honor of both Mary and Assemblyman Gene Mullen. And if council has any comments, just come on in.
Thank you for those words, Mayor Snyder.
Thank you. And, and to both families, our hearts and prayers go out to you. With that, closing city council.
Mayor, if I may, this is really impromptu. I just got a message that, and maybe you know this, that Don Dambrosia passed away.
No, I hadn't yet.
He's our longtime recreation director here in the city when we first incorporated. So just wanted to bring that to the council's attention as well.
I'm, I knew he was in hospice. We'll close in, I'm, I'm sorry, to the family of Mr. Dambrosia. I also went to school with Don's kids. We'll close in his honor next time so we have time to prepare some comments to the Dambrosia family, our hearts and prayers.
That's a, that's a great loss. I mean, he was so helpful with the recreation and institutional memory.
I'm glad that he was able to see the second groundbreaking.
Yes.
Which was just terrific.
Yeah. And, and that marvelous photograph of him at the first groundbreaking. So it's just been a sad couple of weeks. So we're going to close the meeting at 9:53 and for council member and staff who are joining us, we log off this URL and log on to the next one and let's try to get there. Do we need a couple of minutes before we start? Or just go straight in as quickly as all five of us get there? Okay, thank you. Thank you all.